I'm going to call to order the County City Council Meeting of Monday, August 12, 2024. I would just like to remind people that should you require them, devices are available to help those who have difficulty hearing. These devices use a transmitter and headphones and allow for an individual to personally adjust the volume to their needs. A device can be obtained at the Concord TV booth, which is the black structure in the back of the room here in council chambers. Having said that, would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Counselor Brown, here.
Mayor Champlin.
Here.
Counselor Fennessy.
Present.
Counselor Foot.
Present.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Here.
Counselor Horn.
Here.
Counselor Keach.
Here.
Counselor Kretovic.
Here.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor McNamara.
Excuse me.
Counselor Shawsher.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Schultz running a little late.
Counselor Seku.
Is it?
And Counselor Todd.
Here.
Very well. Thank you. That having been done, I believe we have an introduction. Mr. City Manager?
Do the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, the minutes. I skipped right over them. I apologize. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 8, 2024 City Council Meeting?
Moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Your Honor.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have two amendments that I'd like to make to the minutes. The first is on page six, where Dan Williams, a Concord resident, asked members of City Council. I would like it to reflect what occurred, which was he stated, per the reorganization of planning zoning and the community development department, what is, what the council's position is on the school board's middle school project. So just adding that line, per the reorganization, what the council's position is on the middle school project.
Any objections to that?
Just question, Your Honor. Thank you. For the city clerk, when the minutes are composed, can you just go through that process, how that's accomplished?
Yes. So in accordance with this data, say, we account for what the motions are, who's in attendance, a brief summary of discussions, and that's just about it, really.
So follow up. So just to be clear, the minutes reflect an audio recording that somebody in your office listens to and transcribes them?
Yes. Not verbatim, though, yes.
Understood. Thank you.
I'll ask a question. Madam Clerk, is it our policy to transcribe the meeting as opposed to capturing the key points in the meeting?
It is not. Not our policy.
All right. And does this phrase regarding Mr. Williams' testimony, frankly, I think this captures what he asked. I'm not sure what the entirety is.
Your Honor, it does not mention the middle school project, which is exactly what he stated, and that was documented later in news, multiple news articles.
Well, then it's public, right?
Well, our minutes are an official document, so.
Right. Counselor Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm not understanding the relevance of having the specificity that Counselor Brown is asking for. Maybe she could clarify.
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Williams specifically asked about the school board and middle school project and the board's position on it. And so I thought that was, what is reflected is he also asked about minutes. That's in there, but stating the middle school project, asking for the council's position is not.
Counselor Kretovic.
Thanks, Your Honor. Though it is testimony, we were not required to answer any question of anybody that comes up and asks the council questions. Correct, Your Honor?
Correct.
Thanks.
And the chair ruled that it wasn't germane because it really didn't have relevance to the reorganization of the city department.
That's how I understood it. Thank you.
But it was captured. I think this sufficiently captures the.
Your Honor, I respectfully disagree. He, it states that he requested the minutes between the school board and the city, but I think it's important that we reflect that he asked about the council's position.
Counselor Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. If he was asking for minutes of discussion between the school board and the city council, that doesn't exist. There wouldn't be any meeting minutes anyway. The question relevant to what the city council's position is, was, on the school board, is not relevant to the conversation that was taking place on the ordinance in which we were looking at, or the matter we were looking at. So I can, I can see the argument for saying that he was asking specifically for minutes between the school board and the city council relative to the middle school as being a revision, but not the question of the council and their position on the school board.
Your Honor, I would be perfectly comfortable with amending them to say minutes regarding the middle school project. The words "middle school project" is missing from that.
I can live with that.
Thank you.
If the clerk wants to insert.
I have a second amendment as well.
I know. I understand. Any objection to that?
No objection. No.
All right, fine. Thank you. Counselor Brown, Your Honor?
Sure. The second one is on page 14. Counselor Kretovic noted the winning performance of Concord residents at the junior championships. It should be changed to Counselor Kretovic noted the winning performance of non-resident Beaver Meadow members at the junior golf championships.
Your Honor?
Yes, Counselor.
Did she say that word?
He, I'm sorry. Counselor Kretovic said, "In Beaver Meadow News, our juniors," they're non-residents, and I think that's important.
Well, I think.
Follow up, Your Honor?
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, just to the point, the record reflects the minutes. You can't insert words.
Your Honor?
Counselor Brown.
It's summarizing. It is summarizing her statement, not adding verbatim. I'm just clarifying that it was, she was acknowledging a winning performance of non-residents.
Counselor Brown, I just would point out that in the first case, you're asking us to insert something that was there, and now you're asking us to insert something that was not there, which is not, and not relevant to the counselor's comments.
Your Honor, I clarify. It was inaccurate. They, the minutes state they're Concord residents.
Counselor Brown, occasionally you say things that are inaccurate, and they make it into the minutes, and nobody, and nobody tries to correct or change what you said, whatever it was that you said. And the same thing happens to all of us at times. So that, you know, I'm sorry, but I think this is really, really, really.
Well, Your Honor, respectfully, I think it's relevant, especially with what's coming forward later in this evening.
Oh, so you're trying to make a point about what's coming up later?
Well, I am. I am.
And you're using the minutes in order to build your platform? Is that what you're doing?
Because Counselor Kretovic did not use the word "residents," and yet that is in the minutes.
Counselor.
Your Honor, I would recommend that we make a change that says Concord, junior, members at Beaver Meadow, won, and remove the word "residents," which has no relevance at this point in time on anything related to the golf course and their payment of greens fees or membership. There is no non-residential differential, and therefore there should be no association to resident, non-resident. We're talking about junior members, juniors. This is the attack we're now at, but I would certainly entertain that revision.
Your Honor, I am comfortable with stating Concord, junior, members.
That's fine. Let the minutes reflect that. Madam Clerk, when you finish with that, I have a change.
Are you sure?
I am.
I am done. Thank you.
Thank you. On page 15, next to the last paragraph, the last paragraph related to my comments, I would just, in the third line, the reading was not of a book by Frederick Douglass, it was of his address, "What to the Slave is the Fourth of July."
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the spelling of Concord.
TV.
At the end of that sentence.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, there is an "R" missing. Thank you, Counselor. All right. Any other comments or modifications? All those in favor of adopting the minutes as modified, the city may be saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Eyes have it. Thank you. Now, Mr. City Manager.
Let me see if I can follow that. So we, I'd like to have the city solicitor and the deputy city solicitor come forward just for an introduction.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hasn't left yet, so that's great news.
Surprised.
I am very pleased this evening to introduce the city's new deputy city solicitor, John Conforti. John joins us from the New Hampshire Lottery Commission, where he worked as the chief compliance officer. Before that, he worked for the New Hampshire Attorney General's Office in both the Civil Bureau and the Transportation Bureau, where he became familiar with issues that our office deals with regularly, such as right-to-know law, land use matters, contract procurement. He was involved in litigation for the Attorney General's Office. He joined us in early July. He has hit the ground running, for sure, and we are very pleased to have him as part of our legal team.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor, and members of the council. I had the opportunity to work with the city solicitor's office on a few occasions while I represented the state, and those were enormously positive interactions. But I didn't realize how well-regarded the city solicitor's office was until I told people I was coming over here, and the amount of praise and the high regard that this office has around the state from attorneys, other individuals that comes into contact with, is amazing. So very happy and humbled to be a part of that. And as Danielle said, I've been here a little over six weeks now. I've gotten to work with many of the departments, and again, just blown away by the amount of talent and dedication of all of the city departments that I've gotten to work with. So I'm excited to be part of the team. I hope I can help the city, and I look forward to working with all of you as well.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Now, it is my great pleasure to present a proclamation to Concord TV. Is there somebody who's ready to come forward and accept this proclamation?
I can't do two things at once. It's a long walk up here.
I know. Please introduce you. You don't have to sit down. Please introduce yourself.
Well, for the microphones, maybe.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Like business.
Always paying attention to business.
Josh Hardy, Executive Director of Concord TV, and we are the public access station that provides access to meeting videos, community videos, and all of those great things.
Super. And this is the 25th anniversary of the founding of Concord TV, is it not?
That's right.
That's excellent. This is the second proclamation that I have had an opportunity in the last two weeks to read, and both of them have been a great pleasure. So proclamation in recognition of Concord Community TV's 25th anniversary. Whereas Concord Community TV, Concord TV, has spent 25 years serving its mission of building community through media, and whereas the organization is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that manages and operates Concord, New Hampshire's public education and government access programming, which airs on local Comcast, Breeze Line, and web streaming, and whereas Concord TV records and livestreams city council, zoning board, planning board, and school board public meetings, and maintains an archive of those meetings for public record, and whereas their popular youth video camps offered every summer in collaboration with Concord Parks and Recreation have introduced hundreds of students to the video production industry by encouraging creative expression through visual media, and whereas the organization provides video coverage of community events such as Market Days Festival, Chamber of Commerce forums, school concerts, Concord High School athletics, and other events of public interest. I'm glad there aren't more because I ran out of breath. And whereas Concord TV's professional TV and podcast studios have provided affordable and accessible recording space for thousands of hours of local, non-commercial programming, and whereas Concord TV provides scholarship opportunities for students pursuing a career in media and communications, and whereas Concord TV's employment opportunities have kept media professionals in the greater Concord area to live, work, and play. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Byron O'Champlin, Mayor of the City of Concord, New Hampshire, hereby congratulate Concord Community TV on 25 years of service to the Concord community and encourage citizens to join us in celebrating their 25th anniversary.
Now, I'm not your photographer. You have a new one.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Josh.
I get back to work.
We're now going to turn to the consent calendar. I'll note that Consent Items Number 20, 21, and 31 have been pulled from Consent. May I have a motion to adopt the remainder of the consent calendar?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it. We now turn to the public hearing portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk, Item 35A.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $200,000 in the Loudoun Road Bridge Improvement Project for the evaluation and interim repair of the bridge deck on the Loudoun Road Bridge and authorizing the transfer of $200,000 from the bridge reserve fund for this purpose.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Your Honor, members of the council, because the repair and rehabilitation of the Loudoun Road Bridge is now projected to take two to three years to complete, the Engineering Services Division has developed a plan to further evaluate the condition of the bridge deck using ground penetrating radar to determine the severity of reserve deterioration. Pending to the outcome of these further investigations, the options being considered for the interim repair of the deck include milling and repaving portions, partial depth of full-depth spot deck repairs, and underdeck cribbing. Estimated cost for the evaluation and the repairs of the deck is $200,000, just to be safe. In 2023, the city council anticipated this and set up a bridge reserve fund for capital repairs or replacement of city bridges. Given the immediate need for the Loudoun Road Bridge deck, the request is being made by city administration for $200,000 in funds from the reserve for this purpose. If funded, the staff will work to make the repairs as soon as possible. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Counselor Fennessy.
Thank you. So as I read the report, Mr. Manager, this is something that New Hampshire DOT is highlighting as an issue?
Correct.
Okay. And is it New Hampshire DOT the entity that is responsible for doing the larger, or coordinating with us to do the larger replacement of the bridge or repair of the bridge?
It's a municipal bridge, and of course, the ends up, this is the 80/20 split that that, right? So 80% of the dollars that will come in the ultimate repair or the bridge replacement, repair of the bridge will be fed, will be state federal funds.
Okay. And do we know why the funding to do the work has been pushed off further?
It's just, it's part of the design of this. And remember, we, the city asked for and received, going to receive additional funding for the expansion of the bridge for the, remember, we want to put the, I think, 14-foot expansion on it for the Merrimack River-Greenway Trail connection there, which will tie into the I-93 project and tie into our own trail system itself. So it's a little more, it's getting a little more complicated as time goes on.
Thank you. Any other questions for the City Manager? Counselor Brown?
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, so the renovation by, of this bridge, is that dependent on the widening happening, or could that happen sooner?
It's a separate project. This project needs to happen before that widening happens.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Am I correct that this is in some part a safety measure?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Someone who's on it.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, I'll open this item to the public hearing. Would anyone in the public like to testify on Item 35A? All right. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Madam City Clerk, Item 35B.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $144,929.47 as a transfer to the opioid abatement reserve and accepting the sum of $144,929.47 in litigation settlement funds for this purpose.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
I recommend you take the money.
It would be good. Any questions for the City Manager? All right. Hearing none, I'll open this.
I did actually have a question.
Counselor Fennessy.
And I don't know if you can answer this or not, but given the recent Supreme Court decision, does that have any impact on the monies that we've been receiving?
So far, no. No, it does not. But if it does, I'll be sure to let you know, because we're anticipating this for several years to come. Maybe not to this extent, but over time, additional dollars to come.
Any further questions? All right. Now, hearing none, seeing none, I'll open this item to public hearing. Would anyone like to testify on Item 35B? Seeing none? Declare the public hearing closed on Item 35B. Madam Clerk, Item 35C.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $90,000 in the general fund for a class and comp study and authorizing the use of $90,000 in human resources reserved for this purpose.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Your Honor, members of the council, as you know, in fiscal year 2024, so last fiscal year, the city allocated $80,000 for the class and comp study. None of that, none of that money was spent. Looking forward, we now have someone under contract to do this work. It looks like that amount is required is going to be $90,000. So again, the 80 wasn't spent, and we're asking for the appropriation now of 90, which we anticipated when we had the budget discussions.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Counselor Brown?
Yes. Mr. City Manager, can you remind us what we expect to learn from this study?
So you'll be taking a look at all the positions for the classification, whether or not our rate structure and our labor grade structure and pay scale systems are in line with what we need going forward. It was great when it was done decades ago, but times have changed, and we want to make sure we're competitive with other organizations, not only, not only public organizations, but also nonprofit, in some cases, private organizations, so we can be competitive in our wage structures.
Thank you.
Counselor Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I would certainly understand if you want this question asked with the next public hearing, which also has to do with grade changes for a number of different personnel throughout the city. And how do the two of these align together if we're doing a compensation study that shows us that, hey, this is what we should be paying people in the very next public hearing. You're asking us to make changes to people that are currently, or positions that are currently within our organization without a compensation study to back it up.
Go ahead.
So I'll answer it now so I don't have to answer it later.
Thank you.
Okay.
Or then.
So what we, what we do as, as opportunities arise, so as vacancies occur, people, positions change. If we need to create a position or eliminate a position, as skill sets required for certain positions change, we take a look at each, each position as we go through this. And you've, you've asked us to do that as we, each opportunity arises. And then what we traditionally do is compile them into a proposal that you see as part of the budget, so that you know what the impact of that is going to be. All the positions you're going to talk about in the next public hearing were all part of the budget signal that you received. In the presentations that you received regarding the departments, took a look at those and how each of those positions would be structured in the department. And what, what generally happens many times is a lot in parts because of technology and changes in job requirements. There are, those positions change over time. HR reevaluates those positions, reclassifies those, and makes a determination, what's the appropriate scale to put, put people into that. Then, of course, sometimes people are already in those positions, so do we need to move them to a different labor grade? Do we need to move them on the scale? And those are all put together. What you have, when you approved your budget, you made, you set aside all the dollars to make that happen, but only the city council can change a labor grade, positions, and a classification of the title. So that's what you'll be doing when you take the next vote. So.
Thank you so much for the clarity.
So I'll do that presentation for the next item.
I appreciate it.
Any other questions for the City Manager? Seeing none, I'll open this to the public, I'll open the public hearing on Item 35C. Would anyone like to testify on this item? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Madam City Clerk, Item 35D.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title V Administrative Code, Chapter 35 Class and Compensation Plan, Schedule D of Article 35-2, Class specification index. It's modifying and adding positions specified in the ordinance within your agenda.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
So just to add on to what I said, all of the pieces that were, that you see here outlined were in the transmit letter and are in the individual budget line items of the departments and the explanation of why they're there.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Seeing none, I'll open the All right, seeing none, I'll open the public hearing on item 35D. Would anyone in the audience like to testify on this? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing on item 35D closed. Madam Clerk, item 35E.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title IV Zoning Code, Chapter 28 Zoning Ordinance Concerning Conditional Use Permits for Obstruction of the State House Dome as well as Maximum Height Limits Within the Central Business Opportunity Corridor or Performance Districts.
Mr. City Manager.
So, Governor, Members of the Council, I thought it'd be valuable to have Mr. Walsh, Deputy City Manager for Development, give a presentation on what we, what you have in front of you and why we're here today to talk about this, and he'd be able to answer any questions and then obviously go into the public hearing.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, good evening. So, as the clerk read, you have two items before you, or one item before you, which is an amendment to the zoning ordinance. This all came about as a result of a proposal from Cibarowski Associates regarding Phoenix Hall. As you all know, Cibarowski Associates is a third-generation Concord Real Estate firm that desires to redevelop three properties on North Main Street known as the EMP Hotel, the former CBS, and Phoenix Hall. That project is known as the Phoenix Block Redevelopment Project. All three properties are located in the Central Business Performance Zoning District, or CBP. Redevelopment of these parcels and particularly Phoenix Hall has been contemplated since the 1990s, so for more than three decades. In fact, the 1997 downtown master plan includes a 20-page chapter discussing potential mixed use redevelopment for these properties, including pro formas and floor plans, which is highly unusual for any city master plan. And that actual report was included in the packet that the council received. The maximum, the maximum building height in the Central Business Performance District is 80 feet. However, I would note that there is a way that developers can secure what's called a conditional use permit from the planning board for non-habitable space above 80 feet, usually mechanical screening, screening elevator shafts, things of that nature. So, by way of example, the Hotel Concord building on South Main Street is in the Central Business Performance District. Their roof line is 80 feet, but the top of their elevator shaft is 91 feet. So, that's how that works. Cibarowski Associates was not eligible to proceed, pursue this particular conditional use permit, because what they were looking for to make their project viable was to have habitable space above 80 feet. So, that's what that, that's about. Additionally, our zoning ordinance currently prohibits obstructing the view of the State House dome in certain sections of I-93 and 393. That's been on the books since November of 2001. In order to proceed for the, with the project, Cibarowski Associates applied to the zoning board of adjustment to get variance through those two items, the height, maximum height of 80 feet and the ability to obstruct the dome as viewed from 93. I would note that those zoning board applications followed a determination by the Heritage Commission in October that demolition of the EMP Hotel and CBS would have no negative impact on historic resources within the community within the context of the RSA 7090 tax relief program. That said, on December 3, 2023, the zoning board denied Cibarowski Associates' applications. The Cibarowski Associates subsequently applied for a rehearing, which is customary with zoning board applications, and that was denied. And I would note that copies of the zoning board application and meeting minutes are in the council packet. As a result of all of these things, on March 4, Cibarowski Associates of this year submitted a zoning amendment proposal to City Council. A copy of that proposal is in your packet. Specifically, the proposal was as follows: One, to repeal the dome obstruction provision of the zoning ordinance; and two, to create a new conditional use permit that will allow for, I always call it, habitable space above 80 feet, and basically to be able to go to 90 feet with habitable space. Their proposal, I would note, was modeled on language that is already in the zoning ordinance that allows for a conditional use permit in the adjacent Opportunity Corridor Performance District in the area of where the Capital Shopping Plaza is, which allows for an exceedance there to go from 45 feet to 80. So, they modeled the provision that they proposed to council on that existing language that's already in the ordinance and has been since 2001 for the Opportunity Corridor Performance District height, conditional use permit. Council referred the proposal to the planning board. The planning board held a public hearing on August, I'm sorry, April 17. The minutes of that meeting were included in your packet. The public hearing, my recollection, was attended by approximately 40 people, the vast majority of which were in favor of making changes to the zoning ordinance, and I believe the public hearing lasted for about two hours. Based on that, the planning board directed staff to proceed with preparing amendments along the lines of what they heard at the public hearing, but also a staff report, which I authored, dated April 12, 2024. As part of the planning board's instructions to staff, in April, they expressly directed staff, stated to us that we did not really need to return with a draft ordinance before going to City Council for public hearing. Nevertheless, the staff actually chose to include the proposed zoning ordinance that's up for you tonight in the planning board's packet on July 17, and the board chose not to discuss it, did not discuss it at all. If it's helpful, Mr. Mayor, I can walk the council through the amendments themselves, maybe make some notes about how those discussions from April 17 ended up in the ordinance before you, if that's helpful.
Please do.
Okay. Before I do that, I would note that we did submit to you a revised ordinance as part of your packet, so that's the one that we're going to look at. And we made two changes to it. First, we decided that it was prudent to actually define what the State House dome is, because we did not want any confusion about the conditional use permit and what we're going to block there, which I'll explain to you when we get to it in the ordinance. And then, secondly, there was an unnecessary reference to the opportunity corridor within the zoning ordinance that amends the ordinance relative to the 10-foot additional height within the Central Business Performance District. So, because that was related to the Central Business Performance District, the opportunity corridor language did not need to be in there. So, essentially, what you have before you, which I'll go through here in a minute, is one, and contrary to, just a quick comparison of where staff ended up versus Cibarowski Associates. So, first, rather than repealing the dome obstruction language in the ordinance, the staff is recommending is the creation of a conditional use permit, which would allow the obstruction of the dome on a case-by-case basis, both within the Central Business Performance District, which is downtown, as well as the Opportunity Corridor Performance District, or that portion of, which is really between Hills Avenue, Louden Road, Store Street, and Interstate 93. Secondly, we are also modifying language about the height conditional use permit for the Opportunity Corridor Performance District, the ability to go from 45 feet to 80 in the area of the Concord, the Capital Shopping Plaza, because it is, it makes reference to the dome obstruction language in there, so it needs to be revised. Thirdly, we're creating a new conditional use permit to allow to go from 80 feet to 90 feet in the Central Business Performance District. This is similar to what Cibarowski Associates proposed, but we have much more robust standards along with our proposed language. We're amending the glossary of the zoning ordinance to define the State House dome, and we are also amending the purpose and intent of the Central Business Performance District and Opportunity Corridor Performance Districts to facilitate these amendments. So, if you take out the revised ordinance that's part of your packet, and if you want me to go through one by one, similar to how we do the zone, the budget process, so on the first page, page one of seven, you're amending section one, which talks about amending 28-22 of the zoning ordinance, which is zoning districts established. And the language that we are adding is in bold italicized letters. So, what we're doing is we're amending the purpose of the Central Business Performance District, which specifically previously stated, you cannot obstruct the view of the State House dome, and we're adding language that says, you can exceed the maximum height limit and obstruct the dome as long as you have a conditional use permit granted. We're doing the same language down below, which is in number 12, which is the Opportunity Corridor Performance District, which is that area down on Store Street that I mentioned before. So, that's part one. If you flip the page to page two, you'll see the section two, we're amending 28-41, which is dimensional standards, and talks about performance districts. This is the language that will create the conditional use permit with the planning board to establish, to be able to obstruct the dome on a case-by-case basis. All the language that is new is bold and italicized. If you look at this, you'll notice that on A, B, and C down below, we use language like obstructing the dome to the minimum extent necessary to accomplish the development program. The development program would be the developer's proposal to redevelop or develop a property. That's what that means. The design of the buildings will provide a positive contribution to the architectural character of downtown Central Business District, Opportunity Corridor, as well as the visual image of the city skyline as determined by the planning board. That's actually language that already exists elsewhere in our zoning ordinance, so we simply parroted that language and carried it forward. It's not new. The design of buildings and structures within number C talks about this concept of stepping back buildings at the 65-foot level in the Central Business Performance District. That has been done, there is a requirement to do that on certain streets downtown. This would require it anywhere in the Central Business Performance District where somebody's going to pursue this particular conditional use permit, and it's intended to do two things, maintain pedestrian scale, but also make sure that we can still have some views of the dome from other places in town. If you flip the page to page three, it talks about, there's a, there's some similar language that we just talked about, which is for the Central Business Performance District, we're applying that language to the Opportunity Corridor Performance District if you're going to go above 45 feet and you're going to obstruct the dome. So, that's what we're doing there, again, to help maintain views from 93 through the Opportunity Corridor Zone, which is that area, again, where the Capital Shopping Plaza is, to be able to see the dome. Then, lastly, there is the creation of some tests in E with Roman numerals one, two, and three that are really public benefits. So, basically, what this is saying is, in exchange for blocking the dome, you have to demonstrate that there is a public benefit associated with your project, and you have to satisfy at least one of those three criteria about enhancing the vitality or vibrancy in downtown or the Central Business District to an extent greater than what could otherwise be achieved if the dome was not blocked, or you're removing slums blight, cleaning up a brownfield site, or redeveloping an economically, a site which is otherwise economically not viable to redevelop. You got to prove that to the planning board, or you got to expand the supply of housing. So, that's what that section does. If you go down to five at the bottom of the page, it talks, this is the amending of the Opportunity Corridor Performance existing conditional use permit to allow a building to go from 45 to 80 feet in the area of the Capital Shopping Plaza. You'll notice that a lot of this language is not been, is not bold or italicized, because, again, this already exists in the ordinance, and that's why that is there like that. But you'll notice that there is some changes, because it does talk about the State House dome on page four in C, so we added some language in there to tie all of this together to make sure it was wired properly with flow. And again, we are reintroducing the concept here, as well as about having the buildings back at 65 feet of height to make sure that there are peek-a-view, boo, views of the dome through that area, so you don't lose complete sight of it when and if the area of the Capital Shopping Plaza gets redeveloped, which may happen someday, especially if the legislative parking garage is, is torn down. If you continue on to the bottom of page four, it talks about more, this is the actual conditional use permit to establish the ability to go from 80 feet to 90 feet in the Central Business Performance District. You'll note that in the, the opening sentence there, it says that it's only applicable to that portion of the Central Business Performance District which lies westerly of Store Street and easterly of State Street. So, there was some concern prior to tonight about, hey, staff didn't make sure this doesn't apply to Pennacook. Well, in that language, we made sure it does apply, does not apply to Pennacook. So, we made that, we, we baked that in here, just like it was in the staff memo from April. So, that is here. It goes on to talk about the height of the building would be capped at 90 feet, which we thought addressed some of the concerns about topography in downtown, that it's going to be a hard and fast 90 feet for habitable space. So, we thought that took care of that. If you look at B and C on page five, about solar shadows and solar axis, that's carryover language from the existing CUP that we already have for the Central Business Performance District. So, it's, it's nothing new. The positive architectural contribution to the skyline of downtown, that's, again, carryover language that already exists in the ordinance, nothing new. It's been on the books for 25 years almost. Again, we're carrying forward the concept in D about the 65 feet and stepping the buildings back for pedestrian scale. We like this, because there are other places, as I mentioned, in the ordinance that we, that have this, where someone could get a variance. If you want to get this conditional use permit, you got to do this as part of your project. So, we, that's why staff put that in there, and the planning board had talked about having that in as part of the discussions in April. More concepts that were carried forward from the planning board here, public safety was a concern, so E and F deal with that. E talks about making sure, somebody has to demonstrate that you have adequate water pressure to have habitable space above 80 feet. F is that you have to demonstrate or get a sign off from the fire department that the city's ladder truck can actually reach the top of your building. That was carried over from the planning board meeting in the staff memo. Similarly, in G, it talks about that you've got to do this next to a building, you can only do this next to a building that's at least three stories in height on the same side of the road directly butts you. That's a carryover from the planning board meeting, so that's there. H talks about north and south State Street. During the planning board meeting, there was a concern about allowing this conditional use permit for lots that front on north or south State Street, because having a 90-foot tall building across the street from buildings that are generally one to two stories would be, would not be in keeping with the character of the downtown area. That concept was carried forward here, but what we did was, we created a carve-out and said, you cannot go to 90 feet if your lot has more than 15 feet of frontage on north State Street. And the reason why we did that was, the Eagles Club and the Capital Center for the Arts both have minimal frontages on State Street, and we wanted to make sure, A, to give the Capital Center for the Arts the ability to be as compliant as possible, because they have a very tall fly house. And then, secondly, we're anticipating that someday the Eagles Club will get redeveloped, and this could be instrumental to helping them. So, that's why we created that carve-out with the 15-foot requirement. If you go on, you'll, you'll notice that there's language in I about, you must demonstrate that you're going to achieve one of the following public benefits to the community. So, this is kind of similar to what we have for the conditional use permit for the dome that talks about those things in I, letter I, two, and three. And then, most importantly, J on page six, for applications involving the demolition and replacement of existing structure, doesn't matter how old it is, the existing structure in the downtown Central Business Performance District, you've got to demonstrate, the applicant has got to demonstrate to the planning board that, one, the replacement building or structure will achieve all of the following public benefits, and there's one, two, three, four of them that are there. Those public benefits are that reuse or reuse of the real, use or reuse of the real estate will enhance the vitality or vibrancy of the downtown Central Business District. You can see that we pulled out Opportunity Corridor there, because it didn't need to be there, to an extent greater than what would have otherwise been achieved within the maximum height limit, which is 80 feet. The vitality or vibrancy resulting from the replacement building or structure will be to a degree greater than if the existing structure was otherwise preserved and replaced, preserved and renovated. Number three, the removal of slums blight, cleanup of a brownfield site, or results in the economically viable redevelopment of an underutilized property which could not otherwise be achieved. They've got to demonstrate all these through the planning board. It's not easy. Expands the supply of housing with the downtown Central Business District by at least 10 more units, and they must also demonstrate the existing building or structure is not a viable candidate for preservation and adaptive reuse due to its building's, structure's condition, characteristics, or circumstances. And you've got to demonstrate that to the planning board. So, there's been a lot of discussion about this ordinance and the impact on historic buildings. We took the tact of demonstrate this whenever you want to tear a building down in downtown, and that you're going to be able to do this. So, we didn't tie it to the age of a building, we didn't tie it if it was in historic district or not. Our strategy was to handle it this way. If you go on to the bottom of page six, there's a definition of the State House dome, and there's also a drawing of the dome on page seven to help articulate that. Essentially, in layman's terms, we're only talking about the gilded portions of the dome that sits on. My new favorite thing that I learned through all of this is, the structure that holds up the dome is called the drum at the State House. So, we're talking about the gold dome itself, and then the lantern roof and the eagle on top of it. So, that's it. I think, by and large, the items that were talked about during the planning board meeting on April 21, 4 are baked in there. And again, the board had the opportunity to talk about it. It's July 17 meeting, and it chose not to. I'm happy to answer any questions you may want me to answer.
Questions, Mr. Walsh. Councilor Todd.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to note, before I ask my questions, that this item, of course, came through referral from the planning board. I sit on the planning board as the council representative at the pleasure of Your Honor, and I attended both the March and April planning board meetings where this item was discussed and I voted. The planning board, as was mentioned, decided not to have the draft ordinance language returned to the board for further review, but instead to have it directly sent to the council for disposition. So, I'm kind of in a unique position, I think, there for that part of my responsibilities as a planning board member is to help make sure that the interests of the planning board are represented in the ordinance that council sets to approve. And so, I've got a couple of questions for staff. So, so I just want to start, during their April 17, 24 meeting, according to the meeting minutes, the referral as made states, quote, "Chair Woodfin moved to advance the amendment with a positive recommendation from the planning board, with staff's recommended language changes as noted in the staff memo." changes as noted in the staff memo, along with additional language from Liz Henning and Mr. Pierce Second." So, Mr. Walsh, I know it was, it was a couple of months ago, but I assume you'll recall generally the discussion that was held at the planning board meeting on April 17th, where you attended and participated. That, Brett?
Mm-hmm.
Follow-up, Your Honor?
Yes.
So it's your understanding that the staff memo referred to, but not specified in the referral motion language, is your April 12th, 2024 report to the planning board?
Correct.
Thank you. Follow-up, Your Honor?
Okay.
So do you recall that there was discussion by the planning board members at the April 17th meeting that specifically emphasized pages seven and eight of your April 12th report, which I'll note are not referenced in the referral motion language?
I do recall those. Yep, I have them in front of me.
Thank you. Follow-up, Your Honor? And based on that discussion, do you recall that the intent of the planning board was to have included in the ordinance specifically those items referenced in pages seven and eight of your April 12th report?
I do, and I think I just explained that they're there.
Okay, thank you. Follow-up, Your Honor? I just want to look at page eight of your April 12th report, which is not included as an item in the materials before us. You need to go to the April 17th Planning Board Meeting Agenda and look under item 9A, which is tall, called the 24-025 Staff Report. So page eight of those provides the recommendations, and I think you did cover this one already a little bit, but I do want to follow up with you. Quote, "Staff notes," this is item E1 from page eight of that memo, "staff notes that the Central Business Performance District also includes areas of Pennacook Village. Staff recommends excluding properties located in CBP and Pennacook from being eligible for this proposed conditional use permit." So I think, Mr. Walsh, you've already said that there are no specific references in the draft that exclude Pennacook Village.
Correct, because the way we, the way we handled this was simply defining that this is the additional to go from 80, the ability to go from 80 to 90 feet in the downtown Central Business District is only that portion of the downtown Central Business District between Store Street and State Street. So there was no reason to expressly exclude Pennacook Village because of how we decided to define the ordinance.
Follow-up. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm just, we could say it was excluded by omission, but also by the, the other definition that you're talking about. But I guess my question is, are we, are we positively certain that that's going to guarantee that an applicant still couldn't come forward and suggest that despite the dome view requirement not being effective, an application still meets the other requirements and should be considered?
So I think it's unlikely that somebody will come forward with a dome obstruction CUP in Pennacook because you can't see the dome from Pennacook. And relative to the height issue, the Central Business Performance District in Pennacook, which is very small, and it's a portion of Village Street kind of between the Two Cook River and Bujo Square. And because the way that the ordinance is drafted, and it says you can only apply for this conditional use permit to go from 80 to 90 feet, if you're in the Central Business Performance District, which is located between Store Street and State Street, it is impossible for somebody to be able to go from 80 to 90 feet in Pennacook.
Okay, thank you. Follow-up? Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I mean, generally, I guess I feel more comfortable the ordinance included a line that said, "The Pennacook CBP shall be excluded from this ordinance," you know, "to exceed the 80-foot height limit," just to bring extra clarification to it, but I understand what you're saying. If I can go to item E2, that states, quote, "Recognizing discussion in the 1997 master plan about the impact of topographic issues on the east side of Main Street, the board may want to consider limiting eligibility for the CUP to only those properties in the CBP district located on the easterly side of Main Street, between Pleasant Street and Loudoun Road." My understanding, the zoning map that has been attached, part of our package, that says zoning map downtown CBP and OCP districts, that, that has a, it says, quote, "affected properties inside black line border," and it doesn't seem to provide this distinction. In other words, the entire CBP district on both the east and west sides of Main Street are included as eligible for the CUP. Could you speak to that?
Yep. So during the, the testimony, I believe, that occurred at the planning board meeting and subsequent review by staff, we felt that making it that surgical could run afoul of spot zoning and other concerns. So based on, and there was testimony at the planning board meeting that night that talked about, eh, maybe you don't want to quite do it that way. So we did not, the ordinance that's before you does not limit it to only the east side of Main Street between Pleasant and Loudoun Road. It does not.
Follow-up, Your Honor?
Follow-up.
Yes, I'm recalling a discussion that I believe you had with, based on a question that you asked, Planning Board Member Rosenberg, where you asked her, "Do you want to follow the guidelines as set forth in Mr. Pollak's proposal in terms of including the entire district, or do you want to be, us to be more surgical?" And I believe Planning Board Members Rosenberg's response was, "More surgical." Could you explain how what we have before us is in any way more surgical than, than including, you know, it seems the entire district is included? So I'm not sure where I see where the more surgical approach was provided.
I don't recall that particular interaction with, with Planning Board Member Rosenberg, but I think what, you know, I would go back to, this was provided to the planning board on July 17th. The planning board chose not to discuss it, which I took as tacit approval of what had been prepared.
Follow-up, Your Honor? The fact is that indeed, it was included in the agenda of the, of the July Planning Board Meeting, but it was included as an information item on the agenda. So my understanding is that information items on agendas are defined as items intended only to provide information to a board and requiring no action. I don't know why the item was placed in the information section of the planning board agenda. I don't have control over the agenda, and so I can't really speak to that. But it was, you know, basically, it was, it was included in, as one of three items that were just for information only. We have, I think, 10 items on our agenda for tonight that are information only, and I don't expect that we're going to be taking up any of them. They're just there to provide information only. So I mean, I would have preferred that, you know, kind of what you're suggesting there, that indeed it would have been allowed in, but I, my understanding is that there was not a, a, a direct way to, to discuss that.
Mr. Spell.
I'd like to ask the counselor, so, and I was in at the meeting, so pardon me, but just, just trying to get into the line of questioning that's going on here. So is my understanding, the planning board authorized one planning board member to direct staff in terms of what would be in the ordinance and would not, would not be in the ordinance? So he was, he was supposed to just simply take direction from one planning board member and not the comments that were made by the public or the other planning board members?
I can answer that question.
Sure.
Thank you for you. It's, let me just see if I can find a, a reference here. The transcript of the planning board meeting that I have, I basically transcribed it. And the motion that was made at the planning board on April 17th was, Mr. Woodfin said, the chair, "I make a motion to advance this with a positive recommendation from the planning board, with staff input on language two," and at that point, he paused, looking for additional language for his motion, and looked toward Mr. Walsh. And at that point, Mr. Walsh said, "Everything we talked about tonight." And Mr. Woodfin then continued, "Revised the existing ordinance as we spoke to and heard the testimony tonight to add the CUP." So I think that there was a recognition that it was everything that was discussed by the planning board, and Mr. Walsh himself recognized that that was going to be incorporated. So that would include Mr., Ms. Rosenberg's comments and everybody else's comments. But I think that there was a discussion generally about tightening up the language, and several planning board members specifically mentioned that. And there was some, some ongoing discussion about, you know, this concept of being sort of more surgical in terms of how, how the, how the affected area would be defined.
Okay. That, just so, you know, from my experience of doing this for many, many years, decades, to, to grant one planning board member that type of discretion to direct staff to do that is very, is highly unusual. Usually, what happens is a discussion, and the staff then sifts through that information and come up with something that works, you know, on a balance of everybody, not simply take one person's direction.
Can I speak to that again? Thank you, yeah. I, I, I believe that, again, that this, when that discussion was ongoing, there were no other planning board members that raised their hands and said, "I disagree with that. I don't think we should be more surgical. I think we should utilize, you know, put, put the whole entire district up." So I think that that, you know, we, what you would gather, I think, from the general conversation in totality, was that that was the request of the planning board, even though one member was the one who said it, you know, the fact that...
And the rest of the board members said, "Yeah, we agree with her." That's what happened?
I, I think that generally, that they, they were in, in concurrence that that's what they wanted. I mean, it was the impression that I got. I mean, not, not everyone rose their hand and said, "Aye." You know, it wasn't a motion, it was just a part of the discussion, you know?
If I could, that's what I was looking for, is everybody to say, "That's what you do around this table. Do we concur, or is there a consensus around this item?" Not one person making a statement, and then everybody just assuming that everybody falls in line with that.
Follow-up?
I didn't see that in any of the...
I think that the difference that I see here is that this was the planning board trying to generally come up with what kind of parameters they would like to see, what they would like to see included in the ordinance generally. So it was almost like a sort of a working session.
Sure.
We weren't, we weren't deciding on any, any permanent language. I think certainly, as you're, as you're referencing, when the council needs to do that, we absolutely need to have concurrence all around the table. This is exactly the wording we want of this. The planning board had this discussion with the understanding that staff would go back and create something based on the conversation in totality that was had at the planning board. That's the way I viewed it, yeah.
Any further questions, Counselor?
I, I do, Your Honor, but I'm happy to, to break and let some others...
Let's do that.
Yeah, sure.
I'm hoping for just some clarity on what you would term, or, Mr. Walsh, when Counselor Todd is talking about surgical selection of which properties would be considered, I thought you understood it as that you brought in that for a real purpose, a purpose beyond just one recommendation, that it had to also include Store Street and Store Street Extension, which is part of Opportunity Corridor, that this is a conditional use, that people would have to come and present to the planning board what it was, but you expanded it for other opportunities for, why? Why beyond the surgical?
Well, I think, as I mentioned before, we had concerns about limiting only to the east side of North Main Street between Pleasant Street and Loudoun Road. We did carry forward other things that were in here. So for example, you know, going on with, where I'm sure Counselor Todd will go back to, we did make it essentially prohibited for properties that are on north and south State Street. We did that, unless you have, if you have more than 15 feet of frontage, which all but two of them do. So we, we did make it surgical in that regard. There was some discussion about the topography difference on South Main Street in the area of the new building at 32 South Main Street, the Isabella Apartments at the old 32, the old employment security site, and how to handle that. We handled that by simply stating in the ordinance that your building will not be taller than 90 feet. So other than trying to say, "Well, maybe we won't have it here," we said, "Well, no, you can have it here, but, you know, you're going to cap it at 90 feet," which might mean that, because the topography goes, sorry, the topography goes from South Main Street up to State Street, that might mean your building on the, the Main Street side is 90 feet. But on the State Street side, if you could, if you could even, you know, which you can't have any frontage on State Street, but on the westerly side, it might be less than that 90 feet because of the topography. So that's how we chose to handle that one, rather than try to come up with a fairly tortured zoning map explaining where the conditional use permit could be used in the Central Business District and where it couldn't be. So that's what we were trying to do for the sake of ease of administration while keeping the spirit and intent of what was discussed baked into the ordinance.
Nice to follow up, thank you. And that discrepancy of the 80 feet on this side of the road and the topography on the other side of the road exists today. Without this change, if you're on the east side of Main Street, your height limitation on your building is different than if you're on the west side of Main Street because of the topography.
Because of the calculation from average grade, right? And so to, to short-circuit that unusual circumstance, we said, "Your building's 90 feet." So if that means on Main Street it's 90 feet, you're done at 90 feet, even though it's going to be shorter on, on the other way through.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Keach?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Walsh, would you agree this proposed ordinance would give the zoning board maximum flexibility in, in considering each context of each developer and each, each project, and allow them to make more informed, smart decisions instead of a cookie cutter approach where one fit, one size fits all?
So it will, it will allow the planning board, not the zoning board, but the planning board?
I'm sorry.
The zoning board would be happy because there will be less things in front of them.
I misspoke, planning.
But the planning board, I think what this does is it tries to thread the needle of providing some flexibility downtown, putting the onus on the developer to demonstrate what they're doing is reasonable and there are unique circumstances of why they are doing what they are trying to do relative to blocking the dome and going above 80 to 90, or if you're in the Opportunity Corridor, 45 to, to 80. And I think it will, it creates a pathway where the board will, the planning board gets some flexibility to try to allow appropriate projects to go forward while also making sure that there are some tests in the ordinance in the conditional use permit to help weed out projects that are not appropriate, that may have detrimental impacts. So within the context of trying to balance all these policy goals that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kurtz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, thank you for this ordinance and for the time that you've spent addressing this. Do you feel that the language in the three tests, E, items one, two, and three specifically, and item one, is sufficiently clear such that the planning board could reject a project that they felt did not achieve vitality and vibrancy? So there's no reference to any sort of specific criteria, including a pretty recent document from 2018, which is the Main Street Design Guidelines, excuse me. And I'm just wondering why the language is not referencing existing documents such as that, that could be useful to planning board?
Just because the policy's not referenced in here doesn't mean that the intent of those policies does not carry forward. So they're still there. I think when you look at these tests, there were some concerns about, well, what is vitality or vibrancy? I would note that if you go back and look at the staff memo that I wrote to the planning board in April, it cautioned the board about what kind of test it was going to have, particularly within the realm of historic structures. And we borrowed some concepts, as discussed in my memo, from RSA 79E, which, you know, talks about the ability to tear down a potentially historic building to replace it. And so we used some of those concepts here and modified them and inserted them into the, into the ordinance that's here. But I think, you know, results enhances vitality or vibrancy in the downtown Central Business District or the Opportunity Corridor, because this is talking about the dome, to a great, an extent greater than that would have otherwise been achieved if the dome was not obstructed. I think, I, I, that's going to, I think a developer can demonstrate that, I think the board can understand that. You know, hey, there's going to be, but for, if, if we're going to do, if we're going to block the dome, the added benefits to the community in the form of vitality are what? What are they? Are they more people living downtown? Is there more activity because of the particular use that's in the building as opposed to what would be there? And how does that translate to help support downtown in general? So I think there is a way to do that, and much as the, the council does when it looks at vibrancy and vitality tests for RSA 79E applications when we're tearing down a building, which the council has done that in the past. So I think that's there. I think there, you know, and two, when it talks about cleaning up a slum or blight or, or redeveloping a contaminated brownfield property, I think those are very self-evident. Or results in the economically viable redevelopment of underutilized property which could not, could not otherwise be achieved if the view of the State House Dome was not obstructed. The developer's going to have to demonstrate to the board that, look, might, the numbers of this project do not work unless I block the dome, because I have to have a certain amount of density. And he's going to be required, he or they will be required to demonstrate that. I think the housing units is self-evident, you know, 10 more housing units, and that, that goal was really to try and, and encourage more residential housing in downtown. And I think if you go to page six, which talks about the height piece in the Central Business District and conditional 10 feet, and you've got to demonstrate all of the public benefits there, one, two, three, four that are there, plus Roman numeral two, I think that helps build in some reasonable safeguards to the community that gives some flexibility, that allows the, the, gives the guidance to the planning board on how to handle these applications. And, you know, I'm comfortable with the language that is there.
Thank you very much for the information that vitality or vibrancy is a phrase we use throughout zoning. I just would like to draw attention to a recent issue that came before the planning board in... board, in which ideas of our master plan, the spirit of our master plan was insufficient for planning board members to vote against a project which they felt was not in the best interest of Concord. And I have concern that we are opening Main Street, which we've invested a great deal in, and a space where we do need to thread a needle, to a proof of vitality or vibrancy that may not be consistent with the ideals in our design guidelines. The design guidelines are not something that the planning board can fall back on in terms of a legal response. They could be accused of being subjective. We're setting them up to be subjective, but we're not giving them any background by which to defend their positions, by relying on the subjective definitions of vitality or vibrancy. I think that's concerning.
What is the case we're talking about?
The casino. There were arguments that the casino was not consistent with Concord's master plan, and planning board members said that. And then the response was, "We can't vote on something, we can't vote against something because of the master plan. All we can do is look at the ordinance language."
I disagree with that.
I'm not so sure I agree with that.
I disagree with that from a practical standpoint.
That would have been helpful for the planning board to understand at the time of that very controversial issue in our city.
All right. Further questions? I just want to note that we have lots of people. Want to testify, councillor Brown?
Yes, Mr. Walsh, I have a question just, I know we're talking about 80 feet, 90 feet, and I have a view of the State House right here. I don't know exactly the architectural pieces, but the flat part, how tall is that? I'm trying to get a visual of what is 90 feet next to the State House. How much taller is that?
I do not have that off the top of my head, I'm sorry to say.
Any questions? Councillor Todd?
Thank you, your honor. Thank you for your patience in this, I appreciate it. As I say, I really feel an obligation to kind of go through these items as a member of the planning board. So if you go back again to your April memo, Mr. Walsh, the item E3 states to minimize impacts on adjacent residential neighborhoods. And again, these items were suggestions that were presented in the staff memo to the planning board in April, when they were going about trying to decide what to, how to go forward with this. So item E3 states to minimize impacts on adjacent residential neighborhoods, staff recommends not making properties in the CBP, which front on North and South State Streets eligible for this provision. Is it correct that the draft ordinance that is before us now, though, only limits properties located west of North State Street as ineligible for the CUP, meaning that all properties on the east side of North State Street or State Street are eligible?
No. So what the ordinance does relative to the additional 10 feet in the Central Business Performance District, if you front on North or South State Street and you have more than 15 feet of frontage, you are precluded, prohibited from getting the CUP, this conditional use permit. There is a pocket of Central Business Performance District that's affiliated to some of the Riverbend properties that are on, or former Riverbend properties that are on State Street between Blake and Pleasant. And we particularly, we also, so there's no confusion, because some of those properties front on Blake Street. So the last thing we wanted was somebody to come in and build a 90-foot tower on Blake Street, which would be jarring. And so we particularly called out that in the ordinance to say, "Definitely not there," because it wasn't covered by the other prohibition about North and South State Street, just because of the unique shape of one or two of those lots. Yep.
Thank you, your honor. To the follow-up. The item, item E4 of your memo, it says, "The board may also want to make those properties in the CBP district south of Hills Avenue due to topographic changes between South Main Street and South State Street whereby slope increases approximately 12 to 14 feet westward towards State Street or approximately one story. As height is calculated by average grade, this could result in buildings in excess of 90 feet." There's, I think there's some language missing from this recommendation where it states the board may also want to make those properties in the CBP district south of Hills Avenue. Can you tell me what the intent was to make those properties what? And then where, if this appears in the draft ordinance, is it referenced?
So, again, going back to what councillor Kretovic was asking about, in using the sight of the new building at the former employment security site, the topography there slopes up westerly by one story. And so rather than, again, going back to drawing a very tortured zoning map that said, "Well, you can have this, you can apply for the CBP if you're here, but you can't do it if you're here," and having a very odd-looking map for the Central Business Performance District, we said, "Your building will be capped at 90 feet." So if you happen to be on the westerly side of South Main Street, south of Hills Avenue, so you're, you know, Fayette Street, Thompson Street, that's it, because Concord Street is beyond the edge of that, your building will be 90 feet no more, which means the frontage on, the frontage on North State Street will be a maximum of 90 feet, which means as you go westerly, you'll be shorter than that. But that's how we chose to deal with that. So rather than just saying you can't have it there, we just said, "We'll cap it at 90 feet," and that was that. So that's how we dealt with that.
Thank you. Follow-up. Yeah, I guess I was just getting some feedback here, my apologies. There is a, I guess I was just, the way it was, the ordinance reads now is not the same as the language that was in the recommendation in your memo. And that was where the confusion was. And again, I think that, you know, speaking just, I understand that the planning board elected not to have this item returned to them, but I'm just saying that they're eventually going to be the ones that are going to have to work with it, and I think there may be not a full understanding of some of these changes in the decisions that you made.
So I go to the last sentence of that paragraph, "As height is calculated by average grade, this could result in buildings in excess of 90 feet." So to address the concern, we just said, "They will be 90 feet regardless of whatever the average grade calculation." So that's how we dealt with it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Follow-up.
Follow-up.
If it was determined that there are still some issues here that would need to be refocused on by the planning board, that they may want to make some changes to this ordinance, and let's say suggested changes that were put forth in Ms. Hengen's H6 testimony letter, and I know this is a difficult question, but how long would you estimate it would take staff to complete the task of incorporating some tweaks and some additional changes along those lines?
It would depend on how clear the planning board is and what they want to change. I think it could be done relatively quickly if there is no ambiguity about what the planning board is, might be looking for. But I think the spirit and intent of the April staff memo to the board is largely baked into what you have before you tonight. And given that this was provided back to the planning board in July, and they chose not to talk about it, even though they didn't ask to see it back, staff just said, "Hmm, we think you should see it, because it's going to public hearing." So the board provided no feedback. So I don't know what the sense of the planning board is, just based on that experience. Again, with the board didn't discuss it, I took it as tacit acceptance that they were okay with what has been provided.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Councillor Grady Sexton?
Thank you, your honor. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Have you since heard from any planning board members that there are concerns with the ordinance?
Only tonight with councillor Todd, who is the council's representative to the planning board. I've had no other feedback from any planning board member about this.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Have you heard, you haven't heard from chairman Kretovic?
I have not.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we open it to the public? Councillor Todd?
Your honor, if it's not out of order, I could answer councillor Grady Sexton's question, if that's all right? Because I've spoken with the planning board members, all of them.
Well, I think-
We can take that up later if that's-
We can take that up later because I would like to, I very much like to open this up-
I understand, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
You're welcome.
Now open this up to the public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to testify on item 35E? Mr. Pollack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it pleases the chair, I'd ask Mr. Zabrowski to join me, it might save some time if we present it together.
Very well.
That was what we did at the planning board.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Zabrowski.
I'll also be much closer to him, and I'll be easier to step on his foot. For your record, I'm Ari Pollack of Gallagher Firm here in Concord. I'm appearing for and with Mark Zabrowski, Zabrowski Associates LLC. Mark and his company are the proponents of the zoning amendment, article 2841 of the ordinance. As I mentioned, Mark is with me, he's a longtime Concord property owner, downtown landlord and developer, in this case, redeveloper. And as Mr. Walsh explained, zoning amendment relates to article 2841, which is essentially the meat of the city's ordinance on dimensional regulations. It contains the core metrics for the city on items like lot size, frontage setbacks, coverage, height. They're all discussed with specificity for each zoning district. Specific to building height, and even more specific to building height in the Central Business District or has what's been discussed as the CBD, the building height is discussed in two different ways. First, a maximum height of 80 feet from average surrounding grade is established. In other words, you measure up from the bottom to 80 feet and you stop. It's a maximum height of 80 from the surrounding grade. It means don't finish a floor that is in progress, don't add height to complete a building program, don't exceed 80 feet, period, stop, end of construction. What it means practically is a, an incomplete floor cannot be added, and your building is some measure of one floor lower or less. The second way it's measured is whether you're at 80 feet in height or not, don't obstruct views of the State House dome from specific sections of Interstate 93. There's no other vantage point that's mentioned, 93 and 393. There's no other vantage point that's mentioned, there's no recognition that there are a plethora of existing obstructions today. Existing buildings, existing trees, bridges, roadway signs, none of that's a factor in the ordinance, it's purely the view from the highways. No discussion of how a partial or a fleeting obstruction may be considered, or frankly, what constitutes the dome versus, what did he say, the drum of the State House leading up to the dome? I didn't know that word either, I thank Matt for that. It simply says, "Don't do it." And in mathematical terms, I'll share with you, a building height increase from 80 feet to 90 feet equals 12 percent. It's a pretty small percentage. In practice, however, as I mentioned, it can easily be the difference between one more floor, the completion of what's now a partial floor, or in Mark's case, a six-story building that gets no seventh. From Main Street, a passerby on foot or in a vehicle, you'd be hard-pressed to look upward and tell the difference between 80 feet and 90 feet. This is especially true when you consider the language of the proposed amendment that talks about a setback for floors that are above 65 feet. In other words, you hit that 65-foot mark, and if you're starting a new floor, it has to be receded or set back from the front of the building, again, protecting massing on the streetscape. So you have to ask yourself, can you really tell a difference or appreciate a difference of 10 feet from grade? Meanwhile, the ability to finish that partial floor, it adds leasable space, it adds more downtown housing, which is most certainly the case here, it adds retailers and potentially entertainment venues. All of these metrics hang in the balance with and without that extra height. And so you might wonder, why wouldn't you just ask for a variance? And aren't exceptions to rules exactly what variances are all about? I won't belabor the point because Mr. Walsh covered it, but they are about exceptions to rules, and we did apply. Staff has provided you specifically with our zoning application to the ZBA for those variances, as well as the minutes from that meeting in which they were presented and decided. And you can read our arguments, you can read the ZBA's very thoughtful and polite deliberation, and then you can read how they made a motion to deny us. While we didn't receive the variances, and again, the vote was 3 to 2 against, it's as close as it gets, but still a no, the sentiment from the ZBA actually was crystal clear, and these are my words, not theirs, but you'll get this sentiment from the minutes and from the video. We love this project, it's a great fit for Main Street, but the ordinance simply says, "Don't do it. 80 feet's the max, don't block the dome." ZBA actually encouraged us, while they were denying us, to go this amendment route to, and in fact, when we were in front of the planning board in April, the chairman of the zoning board testified to the planning board in favor of the zoning amendment and explaining how his board was challenged to try and get a good or worthy project home, variances simply were not the tool. Variances, as I mentioned, are exceptions to rules. The rules have to be flexible. In this case, the ordinance reflects rules that were made decades ago. Things change, especially on a Main Street, that has also changed. These passing decades saw malls built, and then they fell out of favor, I know a little something about that. Schools were built, they needed replacement. Streets were built, they needed widening. Main Streets were designed, redesigned, and reinvented and enhanced, and we all know about that. Meanwhile, Concord's discussed a widespread rezoning for many years, I believe it's seven or eight now. It's long overdue, it's very well-intentioned, it's filled with great ideas, it's unfinished. In fact, it's a long ways away from being finished, and has had no significant public vetting, so who knows if and when it will be finished. The draft, interestingly enough, if it were adopted, would actually modify the State House dome language. Rather than "Thou shall not do it," the draft says, "Respect the views of the State House, respecting them with flexibility." That's exactly what we're asking for in the form of this conditional use permit. And if adopted in the new, if this amendment was adopted, exactly what we would get. Meanwhile, there's good projects hanging in the balance. I know of only one, but I believe there may be other good projects. Is this a floodgate opening to allow good or bad projects to come through? I don't think so. I think this is enabling the planning board to have a statutorily described level of discretion that they are best suited to discern, to apply, and to decide. This proposal that the staff has drafted and discussed, it's narrowly tailored, and it's well-timed, and it gets fresh ideas started, so that when you work forward and you add and hone measures, you improve what's on the books, but you have installed what can be coming forward and what is possible. You have the memo in front of you from Matt Walsh. His memo concludes that the staff is supportive of the amendment. It also includes the revisions that he described as having originated from the planning board's vetting process. The planning board referral occurred in March, from the council occurred in March, they had a deliberation in March. They decided they needed public input before they could make a recommendation. That was held in April. It went back to staff for tuning and revision, it went back to the planning board, albeit as an information item in July. It's now in front of this council in August. That's a five-month journey. And so the question was raised, how quickly could it happen? Well, it happened on this occasion in five months, that's not so fast. Again, the project hangs in the balance. What happened when it was at the planning board? The planning board was supportive. They held a lengthy public hearing. It might be as long as the one you're about to have tonight. It ended with a unanimous and overwhelmingly supportive outpouring of testimony and a planning board vote that recommended the amendment to the council. It was clearly stated that it did not need to be returned to the planning board, but again, that did happen in an information setting, and certainly could have been a topic for discussion at that July 17 meeting. It happened, I was there for other matters. I stayed until the bitter end to see whether or not it was raised, and it simply was not, and the meeting was adjourned. I guess one question on my mind has always been, why has staff and the planning board both supported this? It's my opinion that it was because the ability to seek more, 10 more feet offers flexibility without much risk. In other words, it says, "Show us that you can do it," and show us that you can do it well, and show us that you can do it in a proper location. It also offers respect for the State House dome from different vantage points, and not just from a car on the interstate. Mechanically, the amendment puts the planning board in the driver's seat, no pun intended, on granting an extra 10 feet, and whether that obstruction of the dome is justified or not. Who else would we want doing this other than the planning board? Nobody. The planning board is very familiar with studies of building programs, mitigation of impacts, traffic safety, parking, architectural integrity, streetscapes, lighting, I could go on and on. The planning board is the city expert for evaluation of the pros and cons of a specific development proposal versus an ordinance which is one-size-fits-everything. Additionally, conditional use permits have become a common and widely used to- Additionally, conditional use permits have become a common and widely-used tool offered by RSA and used by planning boards to consider the particulars of a proposal. They're used in the current ordinance today, and there are specific criteria in the Concord ordinance that discuss what the planning board must consider, must weigh, and must find in order to approve a conditional use permit. They are not easy to obtain, they are not easy to present, and they are not easy to defend if and when they are challenged. You must do it properly, and the planning board is the right place, frankly, the only place, to ask the question, if we do this, do we think it can be done right? There was a question earlier about whether the planning board has sufficient tools to say no when it feels it needs to. The casino example was raised. I wasn't intimately involved in that project. I don't know all the particulars of what was presented or decided, but what I know is that that was a use that, at the time at least, was permitted. This would be a conditional additional height. There is significant discretion involved in a conditional use permit, and the planning board would be well within its rights, as opposed to outside of its rights, to say, "That's not the right place for this. That's not the right example or the right application, and therefore, the extra 10 feet or the partial or complete obstruction is denied." So to be clear, the planning board, I don't think I was there. We would have recommended passage of this amendment with or without a return from staff to the planning board if it had felt uncomfortable having and exercising this discretion, which, by the way, it does every month and on every application. As to the viewscape and the dome views, the current language is, as I said, from one vantage point. What about views from Main Street? From State Street? From the sidewalk? From rooftops? Why is the interstate view sacred? I don't know. I wasn't part of the conversation 23 years ago. Will building 90 feet obstruct some partial views from the interstate? It might. It probably will, in the case of Mark's proposal. It would for fleeting seconds. But some of those views, as we mentioned, are obstructed today. I hope you've all taken the time to drive. With that in mind, there are obstructions. Don't look for too long, because it wouldn't be safe, but there are obstructions. Is it more important to protect that viewpoint than investing and continuing to reinvest in our Main Street? Would you rather appreciate the dome from a car window at highway speed, or from the Main Street sidewalk, or the State House lawn, or a rooftop restaurant? Would you rather appreciate the heritage of the State House at 60 miles an hour, at about a half a mile away, or multiple places around downtown? Also, as this council knows, DOT has long been planning a redevelopment of the I-93 corridor from exits 12 to 16. This is the same stretch the ordinance talks about protecting the view from, but DOT's ultimate plans are uncertain and are still changing. We know the redesign of the highway will alter some elements of the highway, potentially elevation, and now you're measuring from a place that will change. The State House dome, like Main Street, is full of history, architectural value, and it's most certainly worthy of preservation. For those who know it, the Phoenix Hall is also on this shortlist. It's a special place with a treasured history, and Mark's going to speak about his beloved hall in a minute. But consider this, having zoning flexibility to redevelop the CVS building and the damaged E&amp;P Hotel also provides the flexibility and physical connection to renovate the Phoenix Hall. Redeveloping the CVS building addresses what has been called by many, the gap tooth or the low cut of the streetscape. It's kind of a tortured analogy, but nonetheless, it is true. Mark has studied the physical connection to renovate Phoenix Hall, all different ways. He's studied this puzzle from as many different angles as anyone could think of. His redevelopment plan is sensible. It includes an entertainment venue where CVS now is. It includes housing, and it includes office and retail, all things that Concord has identified as priorities for its Main Street. And most importantly, new life for an old Phoenix. Before I conclude, I wanted to just take a note. We're aware of the requests to call a timeout, send it back to the planning board, think about it some more. As always, this process has milestones. In this case, the council received the request, referred it to the planning board. The planning board, in turn, discussed it, scheduled the hearing, took hours of testimony, deliberated, deliberated, sent the unanimous recommendation through staff with revisions that were discussed and with instructions to bring it back to this council. That's the process. It was followed 100 percent in this case. There is no shortcoming in the delivery of this package into your hands. Mr. Walsh then explained tonight how he did his work, and he answered every question in a patient and thorough manner. We can always do more studies, we can always tweak this or that, we can always come back with additional deliberation and go around the turnstile again and again. The reality, however, is that delays have consequences, and time kills all deals. Passage of tonight's version of the amendment doesn't prevent good work and more work from occurring. Ordinances are living things, or at least they should be, and fine-tuning is always necessary, and it can happen today, tomorrow, or the day after that. Mark's offering to participate in those discussions, if and when they happen, I certainly would as well, and I've heard the same from various other stakeholder groups around the city. And so, in defense of your process, the planning board's recommendation, staff's work, your commitment to progress, we ask that you move the amendment forward tonight, but with a promise from all of us, proponent, public, staff, and council members alike, that we all keep working to make it as tight as possible, avoid as many unintended consequences as possible. One last observation, we're all opining tonight, or will opine tonight, about what we think is best for Concord. We love Concord, we live in Concord, we work in Concord. We all pass through Concord for something between a moment and a lifetime. If Concord could talk, what would it say? After decades of change, development, redevelopment, stale rules, wider streets, better streets, would it say that 10 feet is too much flexibility for your planning board to administer? Would it say that the view from a car window is more sacred than the view from Main Street? Would it say that the view of the dome is more important in saving the Phoenix? I don't think it would say any of those things. I think it would say, "Thanks for caring," and let your board do its job. So that's what we're asking, and we thank you for listening, and I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As we all well-wear, this CUP zoning amendment is not specifically for my project, but my project is what has prompted it to come before you today. So I just wanted to give a quick overview of my project, where it is the focal point at this time of the ordinance, so there'd be a good understanding of the project. Again, my name is Mark Zabrowski. I have lived in Concord for 45 years. I came to Concord to help my grandfather manage his properties in his late years of life. I've been developing downtown properties for 45 years and taking great pride in doing high-quality renovations that have made downtown Concord a better place. My current project is by far my most ambitious. I want to demolish the existing building vacated by CVS a few years ago, as well as the E&amp;P Hotel currently occupied by Hilltop Consignment. In this place, I want to build a six-story mixed-use building with a partial seventh floor for a year-round rooftop restaurant. The main level would be retail, the second floor would be office space. Floors three through six would be market-rate apartments with a total of 36 apartments being added. The partial seventh floor would house a rooftop restaurant and would only occupy about 40 percent of the footprint of the main building. And setbacks, so it's not to be visible from Main Street. The rooftop portion would be primarily glass to capture the views with outside seating in the summer months. The project also includes restoring historic Phoenix Hall into a restaurant, music hall, and event center. My dream is also that someday, if we hang on to our primary, to have presidential primary debates held there, broadcast nationally. Wouldn't that be something for Concord? I have purchased a spectacular 1870s vintage bar to be a key element in the renovated Phoenix Hall. I plan to keep Phoenix Avenue as a crucial pedestrian link from Main Street to Low Avenue and Store Street. I'll also add some small retail spaces on Low Avenue to help change the character of Low Avenue as more than just an alley. The project requires the demolition of the old CVS store, a one-story strip mall facade with no historical value that clearly nobody will miss. It will also demolish the remaining portion of the old E&amp;P Hotel, now occupied on the first floor by Hilltop Consignment, with the upper floors completely dilapidated and uninhabited with no means of access. If there's any way to incorporate this portion of the building into the project, I clearly would have done it. We looked at it every which way, and it just did not work to incorporate the existing building into the plan. The Heritage Commission voted unanimously that the E&amp;P Hotel did not possess significant historical, cultural, or architectural value, and the benefits of the new building would achieve more public benefit than could be achieved in renovating the existing structure. The renovation of Phoenix Hall is a very part of the city's master plan since 1997, and as Matt Walsh pointed out in the city master plan, they detailed a 20-page plan on how that could be accomplished, an in-depth analysis of a privately-owned building, something that is highly unusual in a municipal master plan. Many of the concepts outside in that plan are incorporated in my current development plan. The only portion of the building that exceeds 80-foot height is the restaurant venue, which is only 40 percent of the footprint of the floor. In actuality, because as Matt has gone into, from Main Street level, the top of the restaurant venue will actually only be 83 feet off Main Street, or only three feet higher than the current 80-foot max. But because of the way you have to take the average grade between Main Street and Low Ave, you have to add that five feet. So you end up with an 88-foot variance, but in actuality, it's only 83 feet or three feet over the current 80-foot maximum. Will it obstruct views of the State House dome from 93 North? Yes, it will, for a few seconds. It doesn't eliminate the view entirely, it obstructs it for a few seconds. But what do you see from 93? The backside of the shopping plaza, homeless camps, and mounds of trash. Not a very good look for our city. But look what you gain from my project. You exchange a few seconds of the view from 93 North for a new spectacular view of the Capitol Dome from the rooftop restaurant. So you don't lose a view, you gain a new view that doesn't exist now. And from the highway, what do you gain? A view of a lit-up rooftop venue with lots of glass, so you see it day or night, and a sign on the back of Phoenix Hall that reads "The Phoenix," much like the Hotel Concord sign. I don't think many people pull off the highway to check out downtown Concord just because they see the dome from the highway. Seeing people up on a rooftop venue by day or night, how will make some people want to check it out? When they see the Phoenix sign, they may Google it out of curiosity and see that a spectacular music venue, "The Path of Phoenix," with a restaurant venue next door, and will decide to check it out. It adds elements of interest to our skyline from the highway that say, "Concord is cool, let's check it out." So let's summarize what my project does for Concord. It fills the most noble gap tooth in Concord's Main Street. It has a spectacular view of the Capitol Dome from a publicly-accessible restaurant that does not exist now. It adds interest and activity to Concord's skyline as seen from Route 93. It restores Phoenix Hall into a vibrant restaurant, music hall, and event center, achieving an important goal of the city's master plan since 1997. It has a prominent new mixed-use building containing retail offices, 36 market-rate apartments, and a dynamic rooftop restaurant. It provides an increase to visitors who are downtown, boosting retail activity. Together, it adds up to increased tax base for our city, housing, jobs, restaurants, and entertainment, all the elements needed for a vibrant, healthy downtown. But none of these benefits can be realized without the adoption of this zoning amendment, and Phoenix Hall will remain a lifeless venue, still waiting for its chance to rise once again. Zoning is meant to allow worthy projects to happen, not to impede them. The adoption of this zoning amendment will give this once-in-a-generation project a chance to become a reality. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pollak, or Mr. Zabrowski, Council Fantasy?
Thank you. I couldn't pass up the opportunity to ask a question of Attorney Pollak, since we've spent a few times on the opposite sides of various projects, including on a conditional use permit. You've heard some of the concerns raised regarding the criteria for a conditional use permit that are in the amended ordinance. Based on your experience in dealing with conditional use permits in other municipalities, do you think these criteria are too subjective for the planning board to be able to say no to a project?
No. The criteria that exist today in Concord's ordinance and that would be supplemented by this amendment are quite typical of what you would find in other municipality ordinances relating to conditional use. There's an element of discretion and subjectivity in uses that are conditional, and that's why they're not allowed or permissive.
Thank you.
Counsel Brown?
Yes. Thank you for sending around this picture, because I love our downtown. I think it's amazing, and I really appreciate all the work you put into the buildings. I was part of leadership greater Concord, and in September, we went up on top of a roof, a building across from the State House, and it was magical. It was wonderful. Thank you for that experience, thank you for really the vibrancy of our downtown. But, you know, because these buildings, and you've been around so long, you probably know, how high, how much higher would it be from, you know, these buildings? The building next to CVS? How much taller?
Right. The, if, as you sit on the rooftop venue, that will be the height of the top of Phoenix Hall, the roof of Phoenix Hall. So really, it's just the restaurant portion that'll be higher. Even though Phoenix Hall is technically a three-story building, it's really, the floors are higher floor-to-floor plates, and there are large roof rafters, so the, as you sit on the rooftop venue, you will be at the same height as the roof of Phoenix Hall.
Follow.
Wait.
So I'm looking at these...
You'll be one story higher, right? Yeah. No, I take, I'm sorry. You'll be one story higher than the rooftop of Phoenix Hall, as you said. So you'll be one story higher than the roof of Phoenix Hall as you sit on the rooftop venue. And that floor is 40 percent of the footprint, so that floor will be an additional floor, but it's a much smaller footprint.
So it would be two floors higher than the buildings next to CVS?
Yes, counting the partial seventh floor. So one floor higher than the...
How high, I'm sorry, follow, thank you. How high was the building that we, I have a picture, and it's great, it's got diamond and the crosshatch, that we were standing on for Leadership Greater Concord? How high was that?
Oh, boy.
Like, I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, this is the view that people will have on this rooftop bar. It, you know, that doesn't seem to impede things.
Yeah, that's the Sheridan Building. I don't know the exact height of the rooftop of that. That is a four-story building. Again, back then, the floor floors were a couple feet more per floor, so it would, you know, a four-story building, my fourth floor would be lower than the fourth floor of the Sheridan, because the floor-to-floor plates are less. But, yeah.
Follow. But, so, okay, so your fourth floor will be lower, but then it's going to be three floors higher. So it'll be maybe two and a half higher than that.
Right. Counting the partial floor, which is only 40 percent of the footprint, and setback from Main Street, so not perceptible.
Let me add that these are all rough approximations, but I think that general consensus that it would be higher.
Okay.
Any other questions? Counsel Sico?
Thank you, and thank you very much for the description that you just gave. And, Mr. Hart, I have a question for you, because I want to follow up based on the question he asked on your expertise. When it comes to amendment, and then we say case by case, of course, as a city, we have the flexibility and the authority to look at a project. And I heard you, I don't know, two, three times using the word "good project" and "bad project." Any developer can sit here and say, "My development is a good project." What do you think the city will face when we do this amendment today? For another project, a developer come, and how do you define "bad project" in that sense? Because everybody thinks that there's no bad project.
Every applicant and developer would advocate for... Every applicant and developer would advocate for their project, for sure. In this case, discretion, if this amendment were passed, would lie with the planning board to make a more objective determination than an applicant might be able to make for themselves. Also, it would be worth reminding that what we're talking about here is the ability to go from 80 feet to 90 feet. The 80 feet is already by right. And then, separate from that, the ability to potentially obstruct views for some portion of the viewscape or some amount of the dome. But, of course, that would also be case by case.
Thank you. Follow up, please?
Follow up?
Yeah. So case by case, and when we talk about consistency to demonstrate and be fair in this case, because we are going to hear every single project come here talking about it. What do you think about the consistency? And one of our councilors did highlight that, because that's a concern of mine, and I have a reservation when it comes to amending something for a specific project. And then, of course, we want to hold to that flexibility and authority to face another project during that conversation as well.
Yeah, it's a good question. Conditional use permits come with discretion, and they come with parameters for study. And that's why I say that every project is different, because when you dig into the details in that degree, you will always find differences between one applicant and another that would allow you to say to one person, "Yes, approved," and to another person, "I'm sorry, yours doesn't measure up."
Thank you. Counsel Todd?
Thank you, Your Honor. Apologizing again. I'm Mr. Question Man tonight, so, but welcome to you both, and thank you for coming. Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Pollak, similar to Counsel Fancie, while I have you here, in the June 13, 2024 New Hampshire Business Review, an article appeared that you co-authored, and it's titled "Conditional Use Permits: Valuable Tool But Not For The Unprepared." And it states in one portion, quote, "The statutes are clear that a municipality may adopt standards to grant a CUP, but the statutes are silent as to what those standards should be. The result is a wide range of criteria from one municipality to the next. Some municipalities have very cursory criteria to obtain a CUP. Other municipalities have very robust criteria to obtain a CUP, ranging from impacts on municipal resources, landscaping of sufficient opacity, consistency with neighborhood architecture, the degree of lighting compared to other permitted uses, and the preservation of natural, cultural, historic, and scenic resources." My question is, where do you feel that Concord falls as a municipality? Is there robust or cursory criteria to obtaining existing CUPs?
Certainly not cursory. The timing of that article was quite coincidental, and I thought you might bring it up. So what I did was, I printed off the current criteria in the ordinance relating to conditional use permits that the planning board would use today to evaluate a conditional use application. And obviously, it has to be specifically authorized in some other portion of the ordinance, which this amendment, if passed, would do. It talks about whether or not a proposal would endanger public welfare, or safety, or public health. Will it be compatible with the neighborhood and adjoining and abutting uses? Will it have an adverse effect on highway and pedestrian safety? Will it have an adverse effect on the natural environment or historic resources of the city? Will it be adequately served by necessary public utilities, community facilities, and will the services be of sufficient capacity? I think those are detailed criteria that your planning board is using today, would use for this amendment tomorrow. And since I've seen the planning board use these criteria for other conditional use applications filed in Concord, I can be confident that they would know how to do so effectively.
Follow up, Your Honor?
Follow up?
So generally, then, where do you feel that this CUP ordinance, as currently drafted, falls on that spectrum then? This specific ordinance, would you consider it, in comparison to the other examples you provided just now, robust or cursory or somewhere else on scale?
Robust, well-studied, well-drafted, ready for prime time.
One more follow up, Your Honor?
One more.
Do you think that if you were able to have advice from creative architects and expert land use attorneys, and present company included, of course, there exists even a remote possibility that an alternate design for this project could be created that would not necessitate enacting the CUP ordinance?
I suppose I would say that anything's possible, but in this instance, this ordinance is not approving a project. It's not approving an application. It is opening the opportunity to present an application and to have it go through all of the proper channels of whether or not there are alternative designs that make more sense, whether there are alternatives to the conditional use requests that make more sense, and whether it is necessary or not. And I again would say that I think the planning board is well-positioned to make those judgments.
Your Honor, if I may, I just have a few quick questions from Mr. Sobrowski.
Mr. Sobrowski, okay.
Yes, yes. Mr. Pollak, you're relieved. Unless you feel that you're more...
And I am relieved.
Yeah. Unless you feel it's more appropriate for you to answer this. So, Mr. Sobrowski, I'm in favor of your project being able to proceed. I just want to say that outright out front here. If the CUP ordinance was enacted tonight, how long do you think it would take for you to get your application to the planning board?
Yeah, we're working on plans. It wouldn't take too long, a couple of months, but not, it shouldn't take too long.
Okay.
So I know I was relieved, and I thank you for that, but to supplement that, what happens all the time is that an ordinance allows a project to move forward, and then the work starts in earnest and robustly. And so, yes, it's true that things could be put together to file pretty quickly, but a lot of that work has been on hold, waiting to see whether or not this opportunity was presented.
And that actually is very accurate, because I have, you know, architects, engineers, and stuff that are waiting for resolution of this to proceed further. So the uncertainty prevents me from, you know, moving forward with the plans to get to the planning board. And when you ask about the CUP, I can't help but say that without this CUP, we've looked at this every which way, and without the CUP, which will grant me this one additional floor, this project is not viable and will not go forward. Because I have looked at it every which way, from many perspectives, and the CUP is critical for the project moving forward.
Thank you. One more follow up?
One more follow up?
The, so, Mr. Pollak had just stated that he's obviously in favor of granting the, passing the CUP ordinance tonight, and then keep working to make it as tight as possible. So those are his words. So do you think that there are any recommendations in either the April 12 staff report that I outlined earlier in my questions to Mr. Walsh, or in Ms. Hengen's 86 letter that she submitted here tonight, that would create a barrier for your project?
No, I think, but I think Matt, Mr. Walsh outlined pretty clearly the guidelines that incorporate the concerns raised by Liz and the planning board. I actually spoke with Liz last night, and, you know, she made it very clear that she's, she and all the boards, ADI, everything, they're strongly behind this project. It's not, this project's not the impetus, it's the concern going forward. Everybody is in favor of this project, wants it to proceed, and this is just one delay. And Liz had no problems with the amendment being passed tonight, as long as she was assured that the dialogue would continue, and that, you know, that if there were tweaks to language that were appropriate, that they would be made. As Ari said, zoning a minute is a living document that could be worked on, tweaked, and changed at any time.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Counsel Fredebek?
Thank you, Your Honor. Understanding that time is money, and Mr. Pollak is on your time. Are you aware that Mr. Christopher Carley sent a letter of support for this ordinance at 6:08 this evening?
I was not aware of that.
I know it was his intention to do so, but I didn't know whether it was received.
I didn't ask you, sir. I asked you.
He still gonna charge him. He's still gonna charge him.
That's all, Your Honor. Thank you.
Well, I do think it was very poignant that Mr. Carley shows to come to the planning board meeting and state that, you know, the ZB was not the way to address this, and it wasn't the way to get it done, and he felt that a zoning amendment was the way. And he came to a planning board meeting, certainly unsolicited by me, and so that was, I think, very meaningful.
Counsel Brown?
Thank you. Oh, I've already spoken, Mr. ...
Counsel, Counsel Foote?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I'm just gonna try to, I think, boil this down and simplify this. So essentially, you have the right to go to 80 feet, and you're looking to go to 90 feet, another story.
Yes.
So what we're all talking about here tonight is increasing the building. The footprint remains the same, but the building height in 40% of the area, 10 feet, which is essentially the height from that door to the exit sign. That's what we're talking about here tonight.
That's correct.
Okay, so, thank you very much. And secondly, you mentioned tax base increase. What's this project valued at? I know I'm putting you on the spot. Is it, you know, 20 million, 50 million, 60 million?
Well, we're currently just, you know, we have not obviously put it out for big right now, but with the new building and Phoenix Hall, it will be in the, at least in the ballpark of a $30 million project.
Okay, so we're proposing to increase the building height 10 feet and add $30 million to Concord's tax base. Is that what you're telling me?
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Brown, if you still have a question?
Yes, I'm just wondering, you implied that this project couldn't go forward without this, that, I'm assuming that that's, you know, with the rooftop bar. What would need to come out of this project in order to not block the dome?
A floor of housing would have to come out. Or the rooftop venue, which I think is the most dynamic, special aspect of the whole project, to have that exciting, vibrant rooftop venue.
Follow up, Your Honor? When you say a floor of housing, how many rooms? How many units?
Units, there are nine units per floor. 36 units on four floors.
Just clarification, Your Honor? So you would not block the dome, but you would lose, you would lose nine units, and you would not require the CUP?
Well, I wouldn't, the project would not go forward, because, for a number of reasons. It hurts the pro forma. The project is, the project is very, very challenging on paper, with construction costs, interest rates. This project will be in the red. Losing a floor drives it further in the red. If you take out a floor of housing, then the rooftop venue will be, if you're seating at the rooftop venue, will be at the same elevation as the roof of Phoenix Hall, and you have the mechanicals for Phoenix Hall on the infill building, which would obstruct a good part of the view and the ambiance of the rooftop venue. So without that additional floor, the rooftop venue doesn't make sense, the pro forma doesn't make sense. The project just won't go forward.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Keach?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Sobrowski, first of all, it's no surprise that I'm in favor of this move, but I'm struck by the similarity of what happened when Main Street was renovated some years ago, and the pushback to all the changes and the objections the community had just about changed. Concord happens to be a place that doesn't change too quickly or too easily. And I'm just thinking about the discussion some years ago about reducing lanes from four lanes to two lanes, and how that was going to cripple and destroy downtown. Well, come to find out, that didn't happen. Do you see any similarities about the discussion we're having now about change and how it could help Concord and just put some of those fears to rest?
Well, obviously, I think this is a once-in-a-generation project. I think this will, I think this will elevate downtown Concord to the next level. We've done so much. The Main Street project was a big part of it, many projects along the way, but the addition of a rooftop venue, housing, Phoenix Hall renovated, I think will add a vibrancy that will just electrify downtown, bring people. I've had, I've had people tell me that they're having a hard time, employers, law firms, everybody having a hard time attracting employees, in part because of Concord is lacking in that excitement and vibrancy. And I think a renovated Phoenix Hall with a quality restaurant and live music in that historic setting, in addition to that, in combination with a rooftop venue with a spectacular view of the dome and the city and the river valley, I think you're adding two venues that cannot be replicated elsewhere, either because of history or location, and those two venues will just transform downtown in a huge way.
Thank you. I think it checks all the boxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pollak, could you remind me when you presented this proposal to the city council?
Yes, I believe our proposal was submitted in March, and then it was referred to the planning board that month.
And so how many months is it then?
It's been five months.
Has the cost of construction gotten less or more?
It's more.
Do you anticipate that it's going to go down the next...
It does not.
I see. So how does this affect your planning for this project, Mr. Sobrowski?
Well, it sums it up. Time is money. I mean, costs go up. The longer you drag it out, costs just increase. Time is money, delays are money. Construction costs continue to go up, so delays put the project in further jeopardy.
Great, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify on this? Welcome, please identify yourself.
Thank you. My name is Jim Prue. I am resident of Concord on Silk Farm Road. I've been here for about eight years in town, and spent most of my time on the seacoast, and I can tell you, just in my short time here, that it's an incredible city, town that we have, and the opportunities that are here, and the community spirit, it's like nothing I've ever seen. Portsmouth, Exeter, any of those towns don't hold a candle to Concord, and it's for the people that have come before, way before me. It would appear that much care and deep thought has been given to the language proposed to address the present and future changes. Public benefit criteria allows current and future boards the ability to apply reasonable conditions to projects current and future. I'm a business owner who has been before planning boards, and these small incremental bites that the city is proposing to take is exactly what's appropriate, in my opinion, in town planning. The real economic, the economic reality of the cost of development has been brought up already tonight, but these projects, looking at the difference between a project being attainable or not, is now the difference of the requested additional height allowance. That is how tight the go-no-go decisions of developers are on what they're having to make. And if we want small business, the majority of our downtown businesses to be able to continue to thrive and provide the resources for our residents, and property investors and developers to be able to continue to add value to our town, that is what this incremental change makes possible. And I would urge the acceptance of this change and for projects to be able to proceed with a reasonable chance of financial success. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Any questions for Mr. Prue? Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify? Yes. Welcome, and please identify yourself.
My name is Claude Jean-Tiame. I'm a member of the Architecture Design Review Committee. Both co-chairs could not be here tonight. They asked me to speak to support the letter that Liz Hengen wrote, and just, I know a lot of the things that were mentioned there, and also in an email that I sent to a couple of councilors today, were mentioned tonight. So I just want to reinforce the concerns that we had about the wording of the amendment. We just became aware of the amendment last week, and so why that's the case, I don't know, but we would like to make sure that the wording in the amendment is clear enough that we, as well as the planning board, can make fairly clear decisions when deciding what to do when a conditional use permit is presented to us. What were, you know, our concerns were, that there were no references to the design of, design guidelines for downtown. And I know that it was mentioned that they are there, and we're supposed to be following them, but there's no mention of it in this amendment. And just to point out, there have been two projects that have been approved by Planning Board that, in our view, totally disregarded the guidelines for downtown. And so we're a little bit gun-shy when we see, when, you know, with these things happening. So we just like to make sure that the wording is tight enough that everybody at the table has clear guidelines as to how to act, how, you know, what they want, what they should be presenting, what the applicant should be presenting, and what we, as Architecture Design Review Committee, should be using as our guidelines and then, and then recommendations that we pass on to Planning Board. Just a side note, in regards to Mark Sobrowski's project. It was presented before us in an informal manner, just to let us know what was, he was planning on doing, would like to do. And we were all in support of it. We knew that there was a problem with the height, but that's not something that we were addressing when we were looking at it. We knew that he would have to get that addressed, either through zoning amendment, not zoning amendment, but a, a variance, there we go. Or, as he's doing it right, as, as is happening right now, through an amendment. We're not opposed to the height issue. The idea that, you know, buildings will be set, floors will be stepped back away from Main Street is, is, is a good thing to do. One comment, as, as was mentioned, you know, if I'm walking in front of the new building on the sidewalk directly in front of his new building, I may not see the upper floors. If I'm across the street, I will see the upper floors. So it's, it does have a slight impact. But our main concern, as everybody's main concern, is to maintain the ambiance of downtown Concord that, that has been established in the past few years.
Thank you. Questions? Counsel Fennessey.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for your email this morning. You got a chance to review it. And looking at your email, my takeaway was that your primary concern was that the ADR was not getting an opportunity to weigh in. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, as I understand it, your primary piece of feedback is you would like the Planning Board to refer some portion of the review to the ADR?
Somebody give us an opportunity to look at it.
Okay. And, and that, that's your primary concern? Okay.
Yeah.
Counsel Cradick.
Thank you so much, Your Honor. I actually have a similar question. And again, I appreciate you volunteering on this board. I know that it's not easy. The Heritage Commission also had some reservations about this because it was not an item that we discussed, specifically because our requests come from the Planning Board. And so would it be this ordinance that you would change to say that this needs to go to Architectural Design Review? Or would it be another ordinance that you would change that would say similar issues like this should come before the, the Architectural Design Review? And I ask this question specifically because this board does not oversee anything with regards to the Design Review Committee. It is wholly and solely on the shoulders of the Planning Board. We don't appoint you, we don't approve it, we don't give you the work, we give you nothing. You are autonomous, only and answerable to the Planning Board. So I don't know what the request is from counsel, since we don't oversee you.
That's, that's a difficult question to answer, because I don't really know. I mean, that, that would, that would require us going back and finding out, you know, where in that amendment, or where it's stated in another existing amendment. I mean, zoning ordinance, that, that gives us that language. Yeah, I can't answer your question clearly, I'm sorry.
But I, I appreciate it. I wasn't sure myself. Between the two of us, maybe we'd know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Jean-Tiame, thank you. And I add my thanks to you for your volunteer service.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we're being paid the same amount, right?
That's right. Well, roughly. In the back.
He didn't hear you, he repeated.
Ma'am, I recognize the lady in the back. Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Welcome, please, please identify yourself.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Alyssa Alfieri. I own the lease designer resale at Seven North Main Street. I'm also the former chair of Concord Young Professionals Network, in Town Concord, and the Greater Concord Chamber of Commerce. I am here as a sixteen, eighteen-year downtown employee and a big supporter of this amendment as it is possibly written. I think if you guys want to amend the amendment and kind of hone in on that language, that's all up to this committee and other people. But as it stands, I think it, opportunity is abound here, right? We have so much opportunity to take this and interpret it how we want to as developers downtown, but also as a planning board, there's opportunity to nuance this and to put a little finesse on each of these projects as they're being presented. So, yes, there is one project in general right now that is making this conversation come to a head. But I think that if the Planning Board believes in what the structure currently is set as, then this is really just putting more power into the Planning Board's hands to actually have control over the projects that are happening downtown. So I just see this as being a really common sense thing. If we need to get a little nuance on it and finesse that language a little bit more, that's one thing. But I do think that this is something that we should all be in favor of. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Alfieri? All right, thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. Yes, you. Welcome, please identify yourself.
I'm Mary Rose Deek. I'm here because I oppose this ordinance. I believe that because Abraham and Mary Lincoln used that theater, that we should take it as a historic, national historic landmark and develop, augment it, use it to augment our downtown area. They used it, they went to the theater there. And this man has been sitting on it and wants to destroy the historic value of it. These were people that freed the slaves. I feel that to destroy it would be a racist thing. And I think we should take it as eminent domain if he continues to sit on this property and let it fall apart, when it deserves to have one of those big historic monuments of Abe Lincoln there. And I don't feel that it should in any way hurt the Concord community. In fact, it would help it and make it thrive more. However, this man has led his buildings, has a proven record of letting his buildings fall apart, rust and rot. The CVS building is rotten with, like, disgusting mold and stuff. I've been in there, and it feels unhealthy to be there. He has, it's caused this sort of thing to happen. And so it's sort of like, well, why not just support Abe and Mary Lincoln? They went to the theater there. It's a, it's like a tradition to have these sorts of things in Concord, and it would just help. So we should just purchase this building from him and it, and just have it be a national monument to them and to the spirit of, of arts and the spirit of our community.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, I appreciate you hearing me. I just don't want to see that building destroyed. And I want it to be preserved and loved. And I don't want it to be a racist community that he freed the slaves. He was the president that was responsible for freeing the slaves. And I don't want to see any more slavery in this town, whether it's, you know. And I would certainly not like to, you know, I'd like to see that building developed in terms of how it was.
Well, thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for hearing us.
Welcome, please identify yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counsel and City Manager. My name's Mark Cohen. I'm a resident of Concord at Two Therapon Road. And I've lived in Concord a little over fifty years. I'm in favor of this proposed amendment, mainly because the biggest factor I see has to do with the interstate and the view from the interstate. And if we go back into the late fifties, when interstate, early sixties, was put through Concord, I'm sure the reason they didn't want the extracted view of the State House dome, so everybody can wave as they drive up north or go south. But times have changed. It's been sixty-something years. And Concord now has become a destination spot. I think it's, what I'm a little bit confused about is the council's approved over two-hundred thousand dollars in appropriations to look at a deck or park over the Interstate ninety-three down to the river. And that will obstruct the view of the dome from the interstate for that eighth of a mile, or five miles, I don't know the width of it, but the length of it. And so how does that, the current ordinance, deal with that project? Because it seems like you'd have to change the ordinance to get that thing built. That's one thing. The other thing is because of the construction of ninety-three in the next few years, that the elevation could change at certain parts of the interstate, and therefore would affect, could affect a positive or negative view of the dome from the interstate, because of the current structures of the buildings. It could be lower. So now buildings are obstructing dome that weren't before. Or it could be higher, and that you get more of a view. But we don't know, because it's gonna be at least another four or five years before those final plans come out. So I think it's really, what's really nice about the City Council of Concord, just like the Main Street project, that you, the council's been very proactive in looking long-term, short-term, medium-term, and long-term with projects, and seeing how this change, the ordinance, can smooth and make things more efficient and viable going forward. And like the great proposal for the park over the interstate, or some buildings, the structures downtown, and how it affects the dome. So that's why I'm really for this. It's just not Mark Sobrowski's project, which is, I think, a great project, but also gives the opportunities for everybody, for the city itself, to really enhance itself even more. So that's why I'm in favor of this and his project.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cohen? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Jim Rosenberg. And out of an abundance of caution, before I start to speak on the subject, I just want to point out, I'm also a member of the Ethics Board and pursuant to the Code of Ethics. I'm here representing myself, on behalf of myself, as I am an abutter to the property we're discussing today. I'm a member of the LLC called the Store Street LLC, which owns one oh seven Store Street, the location of the law firm, Shaheena Gordon. So I appear on-
Perfect and thoroughly delivered.
Thank you. And again, out of a bunch of caution.
We don't see that often.
I hope everyone thinks-
Enough.
With that said, you're all smart people and elected by an engaged community. I think Concord is, and there's proof in everyone who's been before you tonight, that it's a uniquely engaged community. And that engaged community has elected you and elected our mayor. And in turn, our mayor, who served this city really well and really responsibly, as long as I can recall, I feel like, has appointed a planning board. Each member of that planning board brings to that board his or her own professional and personal experiences and expertise in the area of city planning and development. Yet, when this project initially came before that board, they said, what you've already heard tonight, "We really like that project, it seems fantastic, but feel bound by the existing ordinances to prevent it from going forward." And so this bright board, appointed by our mayor, elected by an entire city, couldn't apply on a case-by-case basis its unique judgment to consider a quality project before it. We're not talking about raising the level of every building on the east side of Main Street to ninety feet. We're talking about the ability, on a case-by-case basis, for a learned planning board to consider the merits, the pros and the cons of every single project that someone wanted to bring before it. And in this case, the bright line rule that's existed has prevented very things that I think most of us, if not all of us, would wish for. The rehabilitation of one of Concord's most historic spaces. The truth is, every time Mark Sobrowski speaks at Phoenix Hall, with every breath, he mentions its rich history. With every breath, he celebrates the presidents who have spoken there and the number of community events that have occurred there. He celebrated it when he got married there. Those were all wonderful events. And the opportunity is for this city, through this change in zoning ordinance, to permit the Planning Board to consider whether or not we might revitalize one of Concord's most important historic places. On the dome, it would prevent or allow for the consideration of a brand-new access point. None of us hadn't had an opportunity yet. I hope we all gather someday to raise a glass on top of the Phoenix Hall to look on that dome. I've never seen the dome from that point of view. So it's a matter of perspective. One is from the highway, another is from the top of the Phoenix. But on cultural and economic expansion downtown, it would do both. Right now, that building is well-used, but underused. And this project allows for an opportunity to really robustly use an incredibly important spot in the middle of our downtown. So your vote tonight is a vote to allow the Planning Board to apply its collective judgment to shape our downtown, not to allow bright line rules to prevent forward progress in our downtown. So with all that said, I hope that you move forward and, and vote to support the change to the ordinance tonight. And in turn, we look forward to this project moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Any questions for Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, you too. In the back. This gentleman back here. Thank you.
Good evening. Jonathan Chorleyan. Thank you for hearing my testimony. I have been involved in a lot of the development in downtown Concord in the last fifteen years. And I, suffice it to say, I love downtown Concord and I care deeply about its trajectory. And for those reasons, I am strongly supportive of the amendment before you. Frankly, even if this were a crappy amendment, I'd probably support it, as long as you let Mark's project move forward, because I think it's so spectacular. But this isn't a crappy amendment. I think this really is a superb piece of, a superb amendment. I read the draft that came before the Planning Board. I thought that was really good. What Matt has produced for you, I think, is really, really good. It's balanced, it vests the Planning Board with appropriate discretion. I think it provides appropriate guidelines. Essentially, it guarantees to us that if we ever lose a glimpse of the State House for a brief instant, we are going to get so much in return for that. We're gonna get tax-based expansion. We're gonna get this enhancement of our skyline. We're gonna get economic vitality. It's, it's such a great deal. I mean, I, I don't think you'll see tons of projects that take advantage of this, but I hope I'm wrong. I hope Mark's first, I hope it's soon, and I hope there are many that follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Chorleyan? Would you wait a second? I'll ask a question. Anybody have a question? No? Mr. Chorleyan, you, by virtue of the projects that you have engaged in, both historic mansions that you've converted into- you've converted into condominiums, historic churches that you have converted into condominiums and apartments, you're kind of, I think, uniquely positioned to answer a question that's been raised in some of the communication we've received, which is, to what degree this ordinance might act as an incentive for tearing down lower-story historic buildings in order to build nine-story buildings? Could you comment on that? In your regard, how likely is that to occur?
I think it's quite unlikely. I mean, these large-scale projects are just insanely expensive. I mean, I have a headache just thinking about how much this project's going to cost you, Mark. I don't think you're going to see them frequently. I think that personally, I enjoy trying to reuse buildings, and I think there's, that's what I'm good at. I have been involved in new construction, Smiling Bindery, but that's not really the world I know as well. I think Concord's got some great bones, and I think where the structures are there, I think developers like me will, most of the time, repurpose those buildings where the opportunity presents.
Great. Thank you very much.
I do have a question.
Counsel Brown.
Thank you. How do you feel, you know, you are my constituent, and I love what you're doing, revitalizing these fantastic buildings, and we do have such great bones. How do you feel about the pedestrian scale of this project?
I think it, I like the sixty-five-foot setback, step back. I think that's important. I think by definition, it's going to be, you know, any building that takes advantage of this provision is going to be a spectacular building. I don't think you're going to have thirty of them. I think they'll, they'll be appropriately dotted throughout the downtown. I think they will look spectacular from the highway. I mean, Mark was making this point. You know, I think it'll, it will be a billboard for Concord, and I think that's incredibly valuable. I don't have, I mean, life's nuanced, you know. Will there be a, will a building that tall shade some building or do some? Of course it will. But, you know, it's, that's one of the frustrations as a developer, is that, and that's frankly why I love the planning board, because they get to consider all these factors. You know, honestly, zoning board, you sort of, you get, you look at narrow issues in the zoning board, frankly, statutorily is not allowed to sort of weigh the big picture. The planning board has that discretion. I always say, "Just get me the planning board. You know, we'll have the conversation. They're smart. They understand the interests. We'll figure it out."
Counsel Kretvik.
Thank you, Your Honor. Counsel Brown's question sparked a moment of reminiscence for me, Mr. Chorlian. During the Main Street project, there were two buildings that were identified as being the two buildings on Main Street. Boy, wouldn't we love to see them changed. One of them on South Main Street was the New Hampshire Employment Security Building. And look at the change that's happening now. Do you recall what the second building was?
It's a trick question. I don't know.
Three letters, starts with a C, V, S. How's the streetscape look on the sidewalk for CVS compared to the rest of the streetscape?
Grim, yeah.
Grim. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry to put you on the spot. It was tough.
Welcome. Please identify yourself.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing my testimony. My name's Tom Fertato, and I'm with Catch Neighborhood Housing, and I'm here representing Catch Housing as a property owner in the city of Concord. We have approximately twelve properties now with about three hundred residential units, soon to be three hundred and fifty, some a stone throw from where this proposed project is at the N. Todd Hotel Building. I think that the amendment is fantastic because, as stated by several other people, it allows flexibility to all of the various boards. This, the misconception seems to be that every building is going to be ninety feet now. That is not how Mr. Walsh drafted that amendment. It allows flexibility, which is exactly what you need. I've done development throughout various states in New England, and the successful development towns, if you will, have flexibility and are able to look at the big picture. The planning boards are able to look at the big picture, as Mr. Chorlian just pointed out. With regard to Mark's project, I think it's fantastic. He checks all the boxes. If you want a vibrant downtown, you need retail, you need residential, and you need a place of entertainment. He's going to do that in one project, right? And that simply is going to support all the other retail, all the other restaurants, and, to some extent, the other residential in the downtown area. So I think the amendment is fantastic, and I think it's progress. And everyone here would say, "We want progress for Concord," but nobody wants change. That's always an issue, right? Progress, but we don't want anything to change. So that's a decision the council has to make. I think it's a fantastic amendment. It's very well drafted, and it's a fantastic project. I don't need to speak anymore about that. You know more about it than I do. I'm still the new guy in Concord. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Fertato? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Welcome. Please identify yourself.
My name's John Constant from Constant Pizza. Me and my brother run a business on Main Street. We are very supportive of this project. We think it's great for the downtown. Concord has become quite a destination. People come in all the time and tell us, "Hey, we come there because we heard about you. We heard about candy shops, jewelry stores, retail stores." So we really, really, really think this is going to be a great project for the city. Anytime you bring more people to the town and the city, it's a great thing for us. So, we're all for it.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. Thanks for your pizza, too. It's pretty-
Where's pizza tonight?
Can we, can we take out?
I already did.
This will be very brief. I'm Claudia Walker. I am currently with Premier Properties Inc., my husband's commercial real estate company, but I was with Mayor Matt County Savings Bank as a commercial lender for a long time. For four decades, my husband and I have been involved in either selling development or leasing development, but we do know a little bit about it. And I also was on the planning board for several months. To that, all I want to say, it's a wonderful, wonderful project. Mark was one of the first people that I got to be friends with when I moved to town, like I say, four decades ago. And I've watched what he's done, building by building by building. It's always very, very perfect. And he takes care of his buildings, and he's a gift to Concord. But I asked my husband what he thought I should say tonight, and I had to come up here because I think it's funny. This is what he thought I should say, and I'm not- Any development within the donation, the downtown is redevelopment. Each project that comes forward will be unique. The city should have flexibility built into its ordinances so that the planning board can determine the merits of each individual project. Phoenix Hall, and I can't even read it. Phoenix Hall is unique, certainly unique, and we should give this property owner the tools to help him get it done. I support this amendment. He is smarter than I. He knew what we were supposed to talk about. So just bear in mind, it's a fabulous project, and that my husband is smarter than I.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Welcome. Would you please identify yourself?
Good evening, everybody. Mayor and Council, David Segal, I'm president of Saddle Napa. I'm also the president of Saddle Realty. We own our, I'm a fourth-generation family business in Concord. Our real estate include a very old building on 219 South Main Street, the old Holt Brothers Building, which is next to the Gas Holder. My point of bringing it up, we're in full support of this project, of this amendment for the planning board. The part that is challenging, that we're afraid of, is this project falls apart. And unfortunately, we have a history of loving our old buildings and loving the history from them. And what I don't want to have happen is that this project fall apart for regulations that we probably should work around and support, and then come back my son's generation, the fifth generation, the sixth generation, my family, and say, "Why didn't we save Phoenix Hall?" Just like we're trying to save the Gas Holder. Just like we, if you go back forty years, fifty years, Bicentennial Square, all these different parts of Concord that we saved after wishing we, after it going into decay. The same thing with the old train station. How many folks are saying, "Boy, I wish we saved the old train station?" And we have, we have more of these projects in town. We have the Stables, where the Abbott Downing Society hopefully will go into. So my point of not trying to repeat what others have already said is that we have, this is a perfect moment in time that we really need to reflect and say, "What do we want with our history? Do we want to save it or not?" And I think this is an issue that we should save. So that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Segal. Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Mr.- Ms. Lemay, you can be on deck. And then the gentleman who's standing against the door.
Good evening, Mayor Champlin. Members of the City Council, for the record, my name is Tim Sink. I'm president of the Greater Concord Chamber of Commerce. I know it's late. I just wanted to be here on record, supporting this amendment for reasons that have already been very well articulated. The only thing I'll add to this is that, as the American attest, the chamber has been a champion for advancing Concord's creative economy for more than a decade. And that has been a fast-growing part of our economy. It's been an opportunity for us to sell Concord, to bring in more visitors, and we just believe that this project will help keep that forward momentum going. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Sink. Any questions for Mr. Sink? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Lemay. Welcome. Please identify yourself.
My name's Frank Lemay. I'm president of Milestone. We've been located here in Concord for thirty-six years we've been in business, so we've been around a while. I don't want to repeat what anybody else said, but I am convinced, after listening tonight, that most, the provision for the view of the State House dome from I-93 is the most poorly-crafted ordinance that I've ever seen. It's a hard job to replace it, and I think this amendment that's being proposed, the commercial use permit, is an ideal way to get over that and really look at things logically and sound mind, sound engineering, sound architecture. Take a clear look at, instead of just reading a one-line ordinance that has kept us here most of the night. So I'm really in favor of this. I think it can really help the project move forward, and I think it could really help a lot of other projects in town as they evolve. Done a great job with downtown. Just keep it moving. If you're standing still, you're falling behind. So don't stand still. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lemay. Any questions for Mr. Lemay? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sir?
How you doing? How you doing? Hey. You heard my brother.
I thought you'd be the one to bring-
I have a little cold, sorry.
I thought you'd be the one to bring pizza.
So-
Please identify yourself.
My name is Dave Constant, and my brother and I own Constant Pizza. I've got a little bad voice issue here tonight. We've been in business almost thirty-five years, seen lots of changes downtown, some great changes, really big changes, from Dupree's Buildings to the new building on the street from us. We're really excited about the change. We're excited about what we're seeing. Concord's been really energized in the last probably ten years. And I think this amendment needs to go through. I think what Mark is proposing is most definitely a great project, and I can see it really bring a lot more energy to downtown, and I'm not opposed to that at all. And I think because of some of the restrictions that you guys are talking about tonight, the ten feet and view of the Capitol, I think, I think it's not going to be noticed. I think it's gonna, it's gonna blend in really nicely with town, with this town. And, you know, I think these men in the black t-shirts can handle the ten feet.
And women.
There's not much they can't handle.
And, and women. I would, I would point that.
Yes, so, great fire department. And thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Constant? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes. And thanks for jogging up. Welcome.
It's getting, it's getting late. Got to wake up. Thank you for hearing my comments, Mr. Mayor and the council. Paul Provost, on October 1st, for twenty-two years, I will go to work on 89 North Main Street as part of our community's community bank. The comment I'm going to make is that I think there's an opportunity for the headline in the newspaper to be, "Concord City Government Works." As a citizen, it's so impressive to sit here and listen to how many different parts of our government have thought through this request over the course of the last five months. And I think we should give compliments to our city employees, and particularly Matt Walsh and his team, for doing the extra work. I work with business people every day, and it's great to say to them, "Yes, in the city of Concord, we will consider things, we'll look at it a little differently, and we will move forward." And that's what I see present tonight. And so I really urge your approval of this request, because that will be the headline, "The City of Concord Works." Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to testify on this? Yes. Welcome. Please identify yourself.
Hi. My name is Wendy Fowlesby, and I have lived in Concord for over forty years and live in the village of Pennacook. And I came with more concerns than I have now, after sitting here for a month and a half. And I thank Matt for educating me and giving me more information. I appreciate that. And Brent, thank you, Mayor, for telling me that all the historical buildings in Concord are not going to be raised to eight stories. So thank you for that. I do have a couple suggestions. I do think you need to keep it open, the dialogue open, and you need to fine-tune your communication between all the different committees that are working on all this. I mean, you just have so much that you're doing. I get it. But that could be fine-tuned a little bit. I'm glad that you're leaving the communication open, and that's great. My, one of my big concerns is the historical buildings, and I am impressed with all that you're doing in Concord and in Pennacook. The community center is amazing in Pennacook. And now, for the developers in the room that are looking for a project, the library building will be available in the near future.
For redevelopment, for redevelopment.
For redevelopment. And so I would put that out there, too, for people. But I do think that this is a good idea with the caveat that you need to keep things open and make sure everybody's voice is heard, because the architectural review, design review committee or something not being involved in the process seems like an oversight. So, you know, my, and I appreciate what Mr. Saddle said.
Thank you.
That's what I-
Any questions for Ms. Fowlesby?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Welcome. Please identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Sue McCoo. I'm a forty-five-year city resident. I own three businesses downtown, one of which is Hilltop Consignment Gallery, which is part of this Mark's project. And I'm totally for it, although I will have to move the store. That is little to pay for renovating Phoenix Hall, getting that to work the way it should. I mean, it's a beautiful old building, but it is not particularly, it doesn't fit probably any code ordinances now, if you haven't been up there. And the CVS building was sad forty years ago. They, when it was built, it was built because it was modern, but it never fit downtown, because, you know, mid-century modern never hit Concord. So, but the, being flexible and allowing- bad proj, I mean, obviously, yes, good and bad, but, you know, somebody that just decides they're going to put a nine-story building in the middle of a residential area is crazy. And you guys have really worked at that. Matt's done a great job. And just to put it in perspective, I've been downtown for so long. I was also on the Streets Committee, and I was also a tenant at Eagle Square, which is next to the Sheridan Building, which you probably were also on that roof. And that's at least five stories high, much higher ceilings, and a few feet up from Main Street. So that would be at least, I would suspect, at least the sixth story. But again, I'm not an architect, so, and I guess those are my big questions for you. So I am in favor of the project, even though I will have to move.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. McCoo? No, thank you. I saw a hand over here. Yes, please, come on down. Welcome. Please identify yourself.
My name is Pam Sonat, and I grew up in Concord. I returned to Concord a couple of years ago, and one of the reasons I came back was because I just, I liked the fact that my hometown looks very much like it did when I was a little girl growing up here. I am not opposed to, I'm not opposed to change in general. I love what was done street-level in downtown Concord. I think that was a really big improvement, really makes things feel so open, and you've got a lot of the outdoor cafes. My concern about this project, it's not this project in particular, but I'm really worried that this is going to be a slippery slope, that every developer in Concord is going to see an opportunity to make money. You know, it just, when my friends come to Concord from outside of Concord, you know, from other parts of New Hampshire or from Massachusetts, they love the feel of downtown Concord. They like the fact that, like, there's, there are great shopping opportunities and nice restaurants, but you also have all these old historic buildings. And, you know, I just, I just really worry. It's kind of like this drip, 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 like this chipping away, and before you know it, things look very different. I have to be honest, I was just heartsick over the destruction of the Norris House. I'm sorry that Mr. Dupre couldn't have thought outside the box and done something more creative on that site. So it's, you know, I, I'm just, yeah, I'm just really concerned, and I liked what counselor you said about, you know, how are we going to decide, like, what's a good project and what's a bad project? Because every, you know, developer who comes forward, they're going to say that they have a good project, of course. So, I just, I'm just worried. I just don't want the downtown, our Main Street, to start to feel cavernous, you know, with, you know, ten, ten feet added, like, everywhere. So, yeah, that's basically all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Sonat?
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Thanks for coming. Welcome. Would you please identify yourself?
Hello, my name is Sarah Mathew. I'm a recent resident of Concord. Moved here five years ago. I am actually an owner of a building that has a view right now of the State Dome. It's very nice. Actually, it could be in threat because it is in that cauliflower zone in the area that you guys have handed out for the information packet. It could be changed, but I think we've had a lot of speakers, developers, large developers here in Concord, owners on Main Street, and obviously they're presenting their own interests. There hasn't been a lot of input from the public, which is the majority of Concord, even though it does get influenced by the developers as well. When I moved to Concord, it was a beautiful city, and I really appreciate the historical sites that we have. A lot of those are downtown. I know that somebody spoke about the Norris House. I was part of that project to look into keeping the Norris House. Sadly, we did have to lose it. I know that Cibrowski's project is looking at the EMP Hotel destruction, and I'm not quite aware of what is going there or what the discussions have been with the Heritage Commission, but I do believe it's the responsibility to not just represent what the developers want to do in the city and to look at it as something that can be maintained while we're moving forward. And part of that, for this segment that you guys are discussing, the ordinance change, I would urge that we look at language that I believe Kurtz brought up, the very subjective kind of language that they're talking about. It can be distributed in certain ways. While some have testified that we will not see that many, that's one person's opinion of the destruction that could happen to our historic buildings. I do think that it is not the first time we've had to branch the subject. I do not believe it will be the last time. I do not know if we have enough in the way of this ordinance that will protect those historic values and assets that the city has. And I would just urge you guys to consider that while this ordinance is not something that I oppose, it is something that can be thought of in the terms, and it should be accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes. Welcome. Please identify yourself.
I'm Bill Norton, another forty-four-plus-year resident of Concord, also a commercial real estate broker. Counselor Brown, according to Google, the eagle on top of the dome is a hundred and fifty feet.
Sonat, thank you.
More than ninety feet. I applaud the ordinance, and let me tell you, as a professional practicing in commercial real estate and development all over northern New England, some very robust processes. And this ordinance has a lot of teeth in it, and, but does give the board some latitude. Additional use permit is by right, especially exception is by right, a variance is not by right, and much, much harder burden to achieve. So, there's been a lot of concern tonight about if we pass this, we're going to end up with twenty-five ten-story buildings out there, and that's not going to happen. What we're dealing with is functional and economic obsolescence, defined terms of value in appraisal. And to save the Phoenix and bring it up to code under the city ordinances, local code, if you improve a building by more than fifty percent of its asset value, not including the land, you must bring the entire structure up to current code, life safety, et cetera. And to do that for the Phoenix Hall and put two stairways that would take, handle egress for public assembly, fire rises, ventilation, et cetera, new elevator, it's just not going to happen. So, the workaround is to put the elevator in the new structure, which needs it anyway, get up and then bridge across to, to the Phoenix. This is an extraordinary project, be at least thirty million dollars, and five million dollars of that's going to be before we even get out of the ground. And that's the economics of why people aren't going to come out and knock down a building here or there. It's just not going to pencil. There will be some sites that might achieve it. I think Tom Baylin put something forward on Store Street quite a while ago that, you know, a million-dollar condos, six of them or something. That's not economically feasible. You have controls of commercial lenders, you know, there's a limit to how much mortgage debt they'll put onto something that doesn't pencil. So, I want to allay your fears that this is going to cause a whole stampede of tall buildings popping up throughout the defined zone. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Norton?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norton. Thank you. Anyone else, is there anyone else who would like to testify? Yes. You are a familiar face, but I'll still ask you to identify yourself.
Absolutely. Jack Don Ward Seven, resident, I've been a resident of Concord for seventeen years. In my family, I've watched the city change over the last seventeen years, I think in a lot of positive ways, considering from where I grew up. I think the project with a lot of the various things that happened around the downtown project, I think this ordinance helped make, take the next step. I thank you for your service as public officials, the planning board and their thoughts, and Mr. Walsh and his team and the administration in preparing this, but having watched Mr. Cibrowski over the years in the paper, both good and bad, I guess, I strongly encourage you to support the amendment, and thank you again for your service.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify? Mr. Herschlag. Welcome. Please identify yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Adam Clark. My name's Alan Herschlag. Everybody else has been bragging about how long they've been in Concord. Well, I moved to New Hampshire in seventy-three. I've been in Concord forty-five years, plus or minus. So, I want to be clear that I, we should be, or I'm not going to conflate Mr. Cibrowski's project with the ordinance before you tonight. I think it's a wonderful project. However, I do have some concerns about the ordinance, the way it's being presented. Our master plan in Section F, the Vision for Concord, on page Roman numeral two-dash-five states, "New development in or adjacent to historic districts respects the character of the area and does not compromise the historic environment. Landscapes and vistas with historic relevance are protected from encroachment by development. View of the Capitol dome is preserved." Section B, Land Use Goals, page three, Roman numeral three-dash-two, number thirteen, "Continue to recognize, respect, protect the publicly accessible views of the State House dome, which symbolizes the city's identity as the capital of the state of New Hampshire." And Section G, Economic Development Policies and Recommendations, small E, Regulatory Changes, Roman numeral five-dash-nineteen, paragraph, Roman numeral six, it states, "Reevaluate the city's height limitations in downtown Concord and Opportunity Concord by performing a view shed analysis, employing computer modeling to determine what building heights could be achieved on the new structures without conflicting with truly valued views of the State House dome within the Opportunity Corridor and along I-93." Our master plan is clear, we should not block the view of the State House from I-93, and our zoning codes are clear and precise, defining, defining where the dome shall not be obstructed. The fact that parts of our zoning code may be inconvenient for a single developer should not be reason to allow them to be cast aside by a single vote of the council. This is particularly true at a time when we are preparing to review and update our master plan next year, a time when there will be the opportunity for extensive community input. For seven years and two-hundred thousand dollars, the city attempted and failed to revise our zoning code prior to updating our master plan. Now there is a call to erase entire sections of the zoning code and to ignore and trample on our master plan. The ordinance before you will allow for the dome and the Capola to be erased from view forever. If we deferred seven years ago to update our master plan and then took seven years to update our zoning code and failed, why are you so sure that the ordinance before you tonight will not erase an important characteristic of our city? Why do you believe that tonight is the night you get it right? The applicant and his lawyer have in the past stated concerns of erasing the view of the dome are overrated, and it is highly unlikely any other developers would go to their extent of cost to increase the heights of other buildings that would further obstruct the view of the dome. But this ordinance allows for additional height and obstruction of the dome, not only from Main Street, but also from the area along Store Street, including the shopping closet. To return to the comment, it is unlikely further obstruction would not occur. Look at the potential redevelopment at the northeast corner of Main and Pleasant Streets down to Store Street. Interest rates and building and supply costs will not always remain at heightened levels. At some point, development will become feasible and affordable throughout the city. The potential for ninety-foot buildings from Stores to the corner of Main and Pleasant would not only impact the view of the State House, but significantly change the entire character of our downtown. And to those who say that three-story historic buildings on Main Street won't fall to a developer, just take a look at the proposed ordinance before you that would have a developer present their project to a planning board that would make a subjective determination that their project will provide greater vitality or vibrancy to a greater degree than if the existing building was otherwise preserved or renovated. Results in the removal of slums, blight or contaminated properties, or results in economically viable redevelopment of an underutilized property and creates at least ten additional housings, housing units, subjective, not objective, to be determined by the planning board. This ordinance may sound good to you tonight to allow a project we can all agree has many merits, but this ordinance opens the door to completely obstruct the State House dome while opening further the door to demolish historic buildings on Main Street. Zoning code should be objective and enforceable in a consistent manner. The ordinance before you will accomplish neither. The subjective nature of the ordinance will allow for multiple appeals anytime a project is granted or denied approval. And what and who determines vitality, vibrancy, how underutilized does a property have to be to be allowed, to be demolished? And how is that determined? Will we, will we see buildings being demolished to allow for greater height and the blocking of the dome because the buildings were demolished for no other reason than they were intentionally neglected? Let's look at the wording in the proposed ordinance. Can you explain to those here and at home how the wording in the ordinance will be defined by the planning board and why it is a good policy to allow the planning board to determine that it will mean whatever they want it to mean? At a previous City Council meeting, Mr. Pollack stated he felt the current ordinance prohibiting obstructing of the view of the dome was aspirational. In fact, it isn't. It's part of our zoning code. In fact, it is the ordinance before you tonight that is aspirational and, and would belong in the master plan if, in fact, you want to obstruct the view of the State House dome and open the door to destroying historic properties. Next year, our master plan will, will be reviewed and updated with public input. So why are you considering a change to the zoning ordinances that will erase the goals of our master plan? Abandoning a process that has served our community well in the past, a process that allows for significant public input when updating our master plan, a process that is supposed to take place ahead of significant changes to our zoning codes. Adopting this ordinance tonight will open a Pandora's Box, and the city will come to regret. I do not understand why, at the same time we promote the history of our city, we are so willing to erase it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Herschlag. Any questions for Mr. Herschlag? Counselor Brown?
Yes. Can you tell me more about the view shed analysis? I haven't heard of that before, or was there another municipality that uses that?
So, that was recommended in the master plan, that there be a view shed analysis. In fact, there was one done for the Concord Hotel. When that was presented to the planning board, I mentioned to the planning board at the time that no view analysis had been done regarding whether or not the building would block the State House dome. The planning board ordered a, a study to be done, an engineering report to be done to, to determine whether or not the, the Concord Hotel building, Hotel Concord building, would block the dome. Unfortunately, the, the, the report was handed to the planning board at the eleventh hour, even later than that, literally two minutes before the planning board started. No members of city staff had seen it, no members of the public had seen it. The planning board determined, the planning board was told that there would be no blockage of the dome from, from the Hotel Concord building, but yet there was no opportunity to review that information, that data. Unfortunately, the, the Hotel Concord does block a section, not only the Capola, but a small section of the dome. So, I've spoken to this before at both the zoning board and the- done regarding whether or not the building would block the State House dome. The planning board ordered a study to be done, an engineering report to be done, to determine whether or not the Concord Hotel building, Hotel Concord building, would block the dome. Unfortunately, the report was handed to the planning board at the eleventh hour, even later than that, literally two minutes before the planning board started. No members of city staff had seen it, no members of the public had seen it. The planning board determined, the planning board was told that there would be no blockage of the dome from the Hotel Concord building, but yet there was no opportunity to review that information, that data. Unfortunately, the Hotel Concord does block a section, not only the Capola, but a small section of the dome. So I've spoken to this before at both the zoning board and the planning board. Although a shed analysis was done, this shouldn't be looked at as a precedent for the planning board allowing a building to block a portion of the State House dome. The State House dome was blocked because of a lack of due diligence by the planning board at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kasekic.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, just to be clear, Mr. Herschlag, it's your estimation that it was a mistake to build the Hotel Concord, and in retrospect, that should not have been constructed?
So I don't think that's what I said. What I said in retrospect is that we should have been more diligent, and perhaps that flying saucer on the top of the building that looks like a UFO could have been adjusted, so that there would be no blockage of the State House dome. The idea that the entire building shouldn't have been constructed would have never entered my mind.
Thank you.
Even though I'm not a fan of the building itself.
I live adjacent to it, and I'm in the shadow, and I appreciate it.
Any other questions, Mr. Herschlag? Thank you, Mr. Herschlag.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Good to see you. Anyone else like to testify on this item? Going once? Going twice?
Your Honor.
I'm sorry. Yes. Yes, you may. Welcome. Please identify yourself.
I'm Jim Milliken, and if, for what it's worth, I've lived here eighty years. The testimony tonight has been remarkable, and once again shows what our city is like, open and willing to listen, and you once again are demonstrating what I love about this community, that we will take into consideration anybody's ideas and thoughts, and you'll sit there and listen to them, whether you like them or not. That's really the most important thing, I think, I have to say. I will also say that I have worn many hats in the community, and I have watched Concord grow from my being a little boy to what it is today. I'm extremely proud of what we have today, and I think the things that you're hearing that Mark would like to do simply add to the beauty and the economic development of our community. No question about it. This ordinance, this amendment, provides the checks and balances that I think I wanted to see. The concerns that have been raised tonight are legitimate concerns, but this amendment seems to have the checks and balances written in that will make the difference. And I trust you and the planning board, the zoning board, the Architectural Review Board, the Historical Commission Board to make appropriate decisions. I trust you, and I have no fear with moving ahead with this amendment. Thank you.
Counselor Kretve.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Milliken is the Chair of the Trustees for the Concord Historical Society, of which I am a volunteer, not a paid person at all, and not a member of the trustees, just to be sure and make sure that I clarify the relationship I have with the Concord Historical Society and yours. When we give tours in the downtown, we often talk about 1855, which was the year we lost all of the east side of Main Street, from Low Avenue to Center Street, all the way down to a river, the river, because of a great fire.
Yes.
And sometimes change happens because of inevitable catastrophe. You lived at a time, because you stated you were eighty years old, and I did not, you stated that essentially you were alive at the time, CVS Building was not a one-story building, that the EMP Hotel was the Eagle and Phoenix Hotel that connected to Phoenix Hall, and you actually were able to enjoy Phoenix Hall, not at the reduced capacity that it has today because of the Means of Vigorous and all the other things, but when it was fully usable as a 500-seat theater. Am I right in that estimation? You saw CVS and the EMP live and active?
Yeah.
Not in 1855, but certainly before. But certainly before the fire that occurred in the nineteen...
No, there's been several fires in downtown Concord, and they've made a significant difference in our community. But you know, when the City Council and Mayor Varano, for example, when we did our 2020 review of what New Hampshire, what Concord should look like in 2020, and when Duncan McGowan said, "We have a red brick built, we have a red brick downtown, and we want to keep it," we did it. And what you have today is of beautiful downtown. It's fascinating to look back and hear the objections. You've heard some of them tonight when people were speaking of, "Oh, my God, the parking's going to be terrible, and you're going to make the streets smaller," and I could go on and on. You folks need to get home sometime tonight. But if I, I am a very strong supporter of this amendment, and if sometime you want to sit down and visit about living through it and what I see as such positive activity in our community, I'd be glad to do that. In fact, I guess I should put in a plug for our, the second Thursday of every month, we have a program that the Concord Historical Society puts on, and one of those is coming up soon, and it's going to be about the development of downtown Concord. And that should really be very interesting, because you're hearing from people. I will go to meetings where there are people who say, "I've been here fifteen years," or "I've been here twelve years," and they love it here, but they didn't live through it, that many, many changes, where there were objections, et cetera, et cetera. Be assured, this amendment makes a great deal of difference, and the checks and balances are what necessary, and thank you for approaching it that way.
Thank you, Mr. Milliken.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to testify on this item? Okay. Seeing none, I'm declaring the public hearing on item thirty-five E over. I am about to announce a five-minute recess. However, before I do that, I would like to ask the council, my intent, with your permission, would be, because we have so many people here interested in this item, to move item forty, which is this ordinance change, to the top of the public hearing action agenda after the five-minute recess. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Yes.
All right. We recess for five minutes.
It will require a suspension of the rules, which requires a two-thirds vote to suspend the rules and go beyond 11:00. Madam Clerk, taking it out of sequence, item 40 on the public hearing action agenda.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title IV, Zoning Code, Chapter 28, zoning ordinance concerning conditional use permits for obstruction of the State House dome as well as maximum height limits within the central business and opportunity corridor performance districts.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion, well, let me rephrase that.
Moved and seconded, I am going to move an amendment to also refer Liz Hengen's letter back to Planning Board so that they can consider the proposals and the points that she raised and allow them to work with staff overseeing or reviewing those and making whatever recommendations Planning Board feels is appropriate back to City Council.
Seconded.
Moving seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Just to the amendment.
Yeah. Opposed? No? So it is the motion made by Counselor Kretovic, seconded by Counselor Fennessy with the amendment, which is that the letter, the Hengen letter, would be sent back to Planning Board. All right? Thank you. Discussion? Counselor Todd.
Thank you. Everyone is tired of hearing me for me tonight, I'm sure of it, but Counselor Grady Sexton asked a question earlier about what the opinions are of the Planning Board, and again, in my capacity as a member of the Planning Board, I reached out individually and was able to speak to all the regular members of the Planning Board. And I've been able to, so they had expressed some concerns, and so I want to read those to you here. The need to provide definitions to terms such as vitality, vibrancy, shadow impacts, solar access, the development program, the city skyline, and vernacular architecture. The subjectivity of those terms creates uncertainty. Definitions would provide clarification for both the Planning Board and potential CUP applicants, and I had several Planning Board members express that that was one of the more important things they thought should be included. We did hear tonight from Mr. Walsh his own definition of development program, but again, it's not in the ordinance, so I think that, you know, we're not going to have all applicants refer to Mr. Walsh for more further definition, that I think their desire was to have a little bit more clarity with that. And, well, that's actually the next point. Provide clarity for references to the Main Street Design Guidelines. That was another suggestion that was made. The map outlining the affected district should be more surgical. There's a recommendation to be sympathetic to the preservation of significant historical architecture, including Main Street from Pleasant Street to Loudoun Road. The ordinance doesn't provide language or enough provisions that would justify denying potential applications. The ordinance is not ready for approval because all the recommendations the Planning Board made are present. The ordinance as drafted is not consistent with the master plan. These are some of the, it seems, in other words, that the Planning Board, you know, doesn't want to work with the ordinance as currently drafted and would prefer revisions to the ordinance before a CUP application came before them. So if I'm understanding the intent tonight of the motion, it's to approve this tonight, and as I said, I'm in favor of Mr. Suborowski's project. We heard from everybody tonight that's in favor of it. There's no questions there. So if we approve it, it gives a signal to Mr. Suborowski that he can proceed with his planning, which I'm in favor of, and, you know, of course, his first stop remains with the Planning Board with the CUP ordinance application. When I asked him the question tonight about how long it would take him, he said, you know, a month or two, and maybe it might even be a little bit longer than that. We don't know how long it will take him to get that ready. So I think, in other words, that what I'm hoping for would be that, with your Honor's amendment, that the Planning Board would be able to take this up sooner than later so that if there are any additional concerns and anything they wanted to incorporate, as your Honor mentioned, from Liz Hengen's eight-six testimony that she supplied, they'd have the opportunity to do that. And I would hope that the timing would be such that they would be able to accomplish that before Mr. Suborowski wants to bring his application. So that, with that, I'm willing to support, you know, your amendment here tonight, and again, the Planning Board, again, the real concern is the timing of this, I think.
Thank you, Counselor. May I respond?
Yes.
I guess I can because I can recognize myself.
Call myself.
Yeah.
Right ahead, your Honor.
Thank you. That certainly would be my intent, and frankly, you know, this is in the court of the Planning Board, and the Planning Board can act with as much alacrity as they feel is appropriate. Thank you. Thank you. Other discussion? Oops, I'm sorry. Counselor Fennessy.
So I just want to speak in favor of the motion. A lot of great feedback from people, particularly over the weekend. I got a lot of good emails. I think there was some great testimony tonight. I think my big takeaway was that Concord is open to redevelopment possibilities. There's some concern about the potential, the breadth and scope of the application of this proposed amendment. The big thing that got me on board with it was the idea that the provision basically says you can only go to 90 feet if next door is three stories. So we're not talking about a row of 90-foot buildings. It specifically prevents that as a possibility. From an economical standpoint, in speaking with individuals, I mean, the feasibility of having, you know, all of downtown becoming, you know, these 90-foot buildings is not realistic. There were questions about, you know, how much does looking at the dome matter? I haven't lived in Concord for 40-plus years, but I have driven on 393 on my way from the Seacoast to Claremont to visit the grandparents since before I can remember, and one of the first things that I remember seeing is the dome and the Ralph Hill building. Those were the two landmarks that I do recall seeing, and obviously were some of the things that drew me to visiting and eventually relocating to Concord. So I think those things are important, but we also have to remember that most of the people who are looking at the dome on the interstate are going somewhere else. What we're talking about is enhancing the ability of Concord residents to observe the dome from locations downtown, and hopefully some of the people who saw the dome and pull off will have that opportunity to view the dome in a way that they never have before. So I think, as, I will particularly be in the, if Mr. Suborowski's project goes forward and it gets approved, my office is actually right on Main Street, right across the street from that CVS, so I literally look at the CVS every day, every day when I'm in the office, and I think the opportunity to potentially replace that would be amazing, and I think it would be amazing, you know, there are other buildings that are underutilized. If there was an opportunity for someone to do something special, I think we should create the opportunity for that to happen. Now, I think there's enough guardrails in place in the ordinance for the Planning Board to make those sorts of determinations. Some of what I've heard is the Planning Board, you know, is unhappy. I guess from a process standpoint, I would recommend to the Planning Board, next time don't say, "Don't bring it back to us." I can't control what happens at the Planning Board, so if you don't, if you want to have input, don't tell staff, "We don't need to see it again." It's too late in the process to tell me, you know, three days before the public hearing, "Oh, we didn't like it." Well, if you wanted an opportunity to weigh in again, you had the opportunity to do so. Do it in a timely manner. I think by, you know, referring it back, based on that letter, obviously, we're giving Planning Board an opportunity. I know I've heard some concerns about tightening up some of the language regarding historic preservation. I'm open to that, but I do think that the ordinance that's in front of us tonight is ready for primetime. I do think it provides the necessary guardrails and gives our Planning Board the discretion that they should be able to exercise so that we do have the opportunity for projects that will create vitality and vibrancy, sorry. So for those reasons, I'll be supporting the amendment.
Counselor Kretovic.
Your Honor, I'll also be supporting the amended motion that is on the table. I had the good fortune, well, maybe I shouldn't have said that in that manner. I was in Manchester yesterday, and on our way back, I was not driving. I thought it would be important to do as other people have done, which is how many times is the State House blocked, driving down 93 as you enter Concord from Manchester? I got up to 19 before my husband resoundly said, "What the hay are you doing?", and then got off the highway, not drove off the highway, got off, and I said, "I'm counting all the times that the State House is obstructed." Now, that was only between exit 12 and exit 14, and that was 19 times. Most of the time, it was the state of New Hampshire's highway signs that were blocking the State House view. Their dome, their signs blocking the view. Now, a lot of it was vegetation, and vegetation can be cut down, and of course, there are some buildings, and as Counselor Fennessy said, the Ralph Hill building, if you're coming down Gully Hill and you get stuck at a light, you are not looking at the State House dome. In fact, you are not going to sit at it or look at it for the entire time that you sit at that glorious red light, waiting for it to change so you can continue your way down into downtown. What I find very interesting about the conversation is that the number of times that we don't see the gold dome also doesn't indicate the number of times we do see it, and when you're driving down the highway and you are paying attention to the road, you are not looking for the gold dome, and that is not why people get off the highway to begin with. They get off because we created a community that's really worth getting off the highway to come to. When we did the Main Street project, we said that we were not going to make a new Portsmouth, we were not going to ever have an ocean, but we were going to create a destination location, and we have done that. And I would remind Mr. Suborowski, he promised, as the former executive director of Concord 2020, Counselor Todd, Mr. City Manager Aspel, Byron Champlin, Amanda Grady Sexton, you have put me in charge of the party on top of the roof of CVS should that building come down, and I'm holding you to it. Thank you.
Counselor Brown.
Thanks. So I just would like to speak in defense of the dome. I think this project is great, but I think the reason that the ordinance is there is because of how meaningful the dome is. You know, the State House is the people's house. The dome was created during the Civil War, and it was a reminder that New Hampshire is still here. And yes, people drive by, but I think it signifies democracy. It signifies that New Hampshire was the first state to declare independence from England, from the British, so it's really an important, iconic piece of architecture, and it's ours. And I think we can't overlook how much it does bring people in. You know, we have 400 representatives, we have 24 senators, you know, it is the oldest State House in which legislature still occupies its original chambers, and I think that's fantastic, and I think that's worth celebrating. So I think having another opportunity to see it at an elevated position is great, but I think that we do need to clarify and really define the language to really protect what we have, because there are some really fantastic locations in the city that you don't realize where you have a beautiful view of the State House, like the parking lot in Fort Eddie. It's incredible. And actually, where the skateboard park is now, when we redevelop the river view, when we redo Kiwanis Park, it is magnificent, and I think it's because the first turnpike from Piscataqua Bridge to the east side of Concord, they were, that was when Concord was really founded and really established as our nation's capital, and so the river is an important piece. So it's not just the highway. We need to protect the views of our capital because it does draw people in, and that's something that the state does for us. It is an attraction, it's a beacon to bring people into our city. So yes, I think this is a great project. I really appreciate what Mark did on Main Street, but I do believe that we need to tighten up the language so that we do protect the view of the dome.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kurtz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would just like to speak to the idea that one can be fully in support of and excited about this proposed project, really sincerely, sir, I want to say to you, it's a very good project, and I would like to see it happen for the many reasons that have been shared about vitality and vibrancy coming to Concord, and you, a person can be concerned about the language of the ordinance, and part of what's happened here tonight is that these two things are completely conflated to the point where it's a difficult position for a counselor to be in, to feel as though trying to ask for stronger, more specific, more surgical language is treated as standing against progress, and that's not really the issue that's on the table at all. I think that the space that I am coming from is a desire to have language that is clear enough that we preserve what already makes downtown Concord and Main Street such an amazing place, and that we have something to fall back on, such that a beautiful project that is celebrating the heritage of Concord and the history of a building and restoring something can happen, which I very much want it to, and we have the capacity to stop other projects which may not be as mindful. So I just want to raise that because I feel like there's a false dichotomy that's been created tonight between those who support progress and those who are concerned about the language of the ordinance, and that's not what the heart of this discussion actually has been. I would just ask that if we are approving this and sending it back to Planning Board, how specific can we be in our requests to Planning Board? To simply say, "We approve it and we send it back," that is where something goes, to languish and not be addressed and not change? How specific, this is a procedural question, how specific can we be in our amendment?
We could certainly be specific. We could say we want it next week, we could say we want it next month, we could say we want it in two months. I guess my understanding of the dynamics here are that Planning Board is itching to get their hands on this so that they can massage it some more, and that's why I said to Counselor, to Counselor Todd, that they can act with as much alacrity as they desire. If Planning Board wants to put this on their agenda this, next Wednesday, and if they want to, you know, charge staff to work on it, and if Planning Board wants to convene a special meeting to work on it and have it back to us in September, they can do that. You know, I mean, I would rather not say that, we certainly could say we want it in a month or we want it in two months, but I would want to make sure that they have the time that they think they need, and since Planning Board apparently is very hot to get this back in their hands, I would think that they would focus on it quite quickly.
Can I follow up?
Sure.
I'm not comfortable with approving something and putting my name on it when I want the language to be different, because then I'm giving my power to another body to say, "Fix it," and they may or may not do that.
May I comment on that?
Sure.
When Mr. Suborowski came to us and asked us to make this event, this change, this body did not make the change because that's not what we do. We sent it to Planning Board because that is what they do, and I mentioned, you know, because Mr. Jean-Tiome is still in the room, it was Planning Board's responsibility to receive feedback from the Architectural Design Review Committee because the Architectural Design Review Committee reports to Planning Board and is a creature of Planning Board, and in fact, is appointed by Planning Board. And so, you know, we are not the ones, frankly, I'm terrified of the idea of us sitting around here and throwing amendments around with, you know, something as complex and important as zoning ordinances. So I would prefer to have that body, which is supposed to be the responsible body, be the ones to come up with these proposed amendments and bring it, and send it back to us for consideration, discussion, and action.
May I?
Sure.
Yes, I share Counselor Fennessy's deep frustration with what I think has been a series of missteps by Planning Board, so I'll just add that to the record. Very frustrated to be in this position tonight.
I think, I'd ask you all to remember this moment because this is the same discussion you're going to have when it comes time for the zoning regulations to change, because you're going to feel like you need to impose yourself, in a good way, on the zoning regulations and then Planning Board to work on them and bring them back to what each of you expects for every zoning, and I mean what every piece of property is owned in the city, the height of every building, the frontage setback at every single neighborhood, because you're going to hear from 44,000 people who are going to have 80,000 different opinions about this thing. And so the problem is, you're going to have is, you're going to feel like you're going to need to write very specific regulations so that we ensure things happen the way we envision them, and what you're going to find is, the tighter you make those regulations, the more power you take away from the Planning Board and staff to work with developers to come up with innovative projects. So, you know, Mark will tell you that the proposal that came to the City Council in March doesn't look a whole lot like the proposal that Mr. Walsh put together working with the Planning Board. We looked at that and said, "That doesn't give anywhere near enough protections to this community. We're going to work with the Planning Board and rewrite that whole thing." And that, so I think that's a struggle you're going to constantly have, is that you're never going to be able to envision the types of regulations that you're going to need to make the things happen that are in your head today, because that's all going to change every single day going forward. So how do, the question is, how do you write an ordinance that is flexible enough with, and have staff and Planning Board members and Architectural Design Review Committee members that you trust will have the public's interest in place? So I know exactly where you want to go, because I've written hundreds of zoning regulation changes before, and the problem that you always run into is, you can never envision everything, and you're always, particularly in a community of this type, which is a city of villages, which is what 2020 was all about, and you start trying to write regulations that are going to work at Pennacotta, but they're not going to work on the Heisman, they're not going to work at the South End, they're not going to work in, you know, in East Concord. So I would, I would trust the Planning Board to, I mean, I think what Counselor Todd came up with, he came up with a list of half a dozen specifics to work on and then have them change, so it sounds like they already have a bunch of things in mind that they want to change. If there are additional things to that, I would just feed them into staff or the Planning Board and say, "We want you to look at this," because I'm going to ask this question as a counselor, when this comes forward, how come this is this way and not this way? And if there's a good answer, you vote for it. If there isn't a good answer, you say, "Send it back."
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Thank you, Your Honor. So if we, Your Honor, if we feel that there are enough issues that this needs to be sent back to the Planning Board because there is some confusion between what was agreed upon and what is before us, then why are we passing what is before us? Why are we not just sending it back to the Planning Board?
Because I would like to, that's a great question, Counselor, because I would like to give Mr. Suborowski some certitude, since it was he who brought this proposal forward. As has been said here, this is a proposal which has, which has benefit outside of, you know, this particular project, but, you know, this particular project has been sitting, you know, Mr. Suborowski has not moved forward, I understood his testimony, for, what, March 8, March, April, May, June, July, for six months, as this went through the process, and I would like to not, you know, cause a potentially good project to fail for all the right reasons, you know? So I believe that by passing the ordinance, allowing him to start things in motion so he can put in his application, but at the same time, give it back to Planning Board and have Planning Board fine-tune it as they feel, as they feel is necessary, and send it back to us, it kind of gives us the best of both. It lets that project move forward, but it also is attentive to the concerns that have been raised. That's why. Counselor Keach.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll be in support of this amendment. I think it's important to recognize that it's our, in my estimation, it's our job as counselors to be up at the 50,000-foot range and establish policy, and in a lot of ways, I think this further empowers the Planning Board to go in and do the work and make those tough decisions, and I personally don't want to substitute my judgment for Planning Board members' judgment, because I think they're closest to the issue, they know the ordinance much better than I do. I just want to give them the ability to have that option. Right now, they don't, so this is just allowing them an additional option that, I don't know how they're going to rule, but I want that option in place. In terms of sending it back for In terms of sending it back for a total review, the Planning Board's already had the bite at the apple. I mean, how many times do we make an applicant go through this process and say, "Yeah, you did everything you should, but let's try it again, because I don't like the outcome." And that's sure what it sounds like right now. "I don't like the outcome, so let's take another bite at the apple." How about giving the Planning Board the ability to have that option and let them run with it? And I think that's all we're asking for tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Brown.
Yes, so actually, thank you, Counselor Grady Sexton, for what you brought up, because I do feel that if we say, "Yes, go ahead," but there are still changes that need to be made, he's still in limbo. So they are, it's not like they meet once a quarter. They are meeting again soon. I don't think there would be any harm in sending it back to Planning Board. We, at T-PAC, we've had things come back to us more than once. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I think we can have the 50,000-foot view, but I think we want to get this right. I think this is really important, and because this is changing the ordinance, this is, this is separate from what happened with Hotel Concord. We are being intentional about this, so I think it makes sense to send it back to the Planning Board with those specific items that Counselor Todd mentioned.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor Schlosser.
So I support this amendment. I think we've heard the testimony from the citizens on both sides, some real concerns about slippery slope and destruction of historic buildings, and also the vitality and vibrancy that this could bring. I don't think we're ever going to get it perfect. I think we're going to get it good enough. I appreciate the balance that the Community Development Team and the Planning Board brought to this. It is a balance, and I think we can send it back, they can have all the changes they want, but I think we should approve the amendment and move forward and let the Planning Board wane as they see fit, so.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other, any other discussion? Counselor Todd.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I know we're getting close to 11, but I just wanted to, there's a couple, a couple of times where it was pointed out about the number of people who were in support and who were against this, and I just wanted to give a voice to those people who did write in and say that they had concerns, because these are the residents that we need to be listening to throughout this process. So by my count, just, at the Planning Board level during the public hearing, there were 34 people who were in favor, who came and spoke in favor, and there were, let me just get this number right, I think, yeah, 34 in support, and there were 29 who were not in support. And 28 of those folks actually sent in written testimony. They didn't appear that night. And so I think that the folks that appeared, as Sir Zern said, had their voices augmented a little bit. So some of the concerns, just to read a few, I'm not going to go very long here on this, believe me. Developers are able to build higher, it may incentivize demolition and replacement of new buildings, which would absolutely change the character of our city. This amendment has implications for future projects that may not have such positive outcomes. Would have widespread ramifications that neither the Planning Board nor the community at large have had time to consider. A relatively clear view of the dome should be preserved as a significant part of our city's brand. We don't need taller buildings, we need less destruction of historical buildings. Please keep Concord Concord. I don't understand why the city would not, would consider not following their master plan on building heights within this corridor. When the city redesigned Main Street, the design was rooted in Main Street's heritage. And finally, what happened to the City of Manchester, the downtown area lost a lot of its charm when they started building those high-rise buildings. I believe that you should extend a public comment, as I do not think you have done a good enough job getting the word out to the citizens. And I think that, you know, recognizing that this would normally, I think, in the course of business, were not for Mr. Sobrowski's project, that we all want to find a way to support and move forward, this might be an item that really would have been subjected to the master plan process, and we would have waited for that. So when we look at some other items, for example, you know, definitions of hotels and motels, the Monitor Way project, even tonight, speed limit reduction on Iron Works Road, all of those items are falling in the category of, "No, you got to wait till we do the master plan." So this one really would, I think, normally fall into that same characterization, but for the project that we want to try to promote. So I do think that I would like to have the Planning Board have another crack at this, so I appreciate the amendment, that's why I seconded it. And, yeah, I'm hoping that they will, they will hear us when we are kind of suggesting that there are a number of us who feel that it should be, you know, on the, on the, on the, on the front burner, not, not on the back burner, and hopefully get some revisions and look at this soon and be able to get some clarity that they have expressed that they would prefer. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Foote.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate everyone's testimony, especially appreciate Matt Walsh's efforts and the developer and his attorney. I had a bunch of questions that we're going to ask, and essentially, they answered all of them. The only obstruction that I've noticed on coming up 93 that wasn't mentioned is actually a cell phone tower on top, I think it's Eagle Square, one of those buildings. So I got to 20, Jen, when I got to exit 14, so I appreciate your testimony, but I think you're...
I'm women's husband. Excuse me, sorry, Your Honor.
So in any event, I've traveled this quarter essentially all my life, and for me is, the benefit of what this proposal will bring to Concord, to the residents of Concord, far outweighs someone that will be traveling through, that is likely to be on their cell phone versus looking at the sunflowers or the State House. So dome. I travel that every day, north, south and north, and I've got quite a bit, quite a bit of experience observing people and actions on the highway. I really believe that the existing ordinance is antiquated. I think by sending it back to the Planning Board, I think that we can make it better, it'll be perfect, as Counselor Schlosser said. And then, you know, for me, this project, I had never been in the Phoenix Hall until I went to an American Cancer fundraiser a year or so ago, and I, and I thought about how important this building is to the city and how underutilized it is, you know, Abraham, we heard Lincoln spoke there, Teddy Roosevelt spoke there. I just think as someone who was born in Concord, Fred spent a little bit more time here than I have, excuse me.
Thanks.
Counselor.
Thanks for that.
I'm going to guess that I've driven by that many more times as you, as a kid on a school bus to this day, so. I appreciate all of this, I just think that this project, and I know it's a general ordinance change, but this project is an absolute, you know, I've heard the term game changer, transformative, this is exactly what this project is. And as someone that's lived here all my life, I think it would be neat to, you know, we've got the Concord Hotel sign, and then we've got the Concord Antiques, and to put this in the middle and say, "Phoenix," I think, I think as the developer mentioned, that it'll, you know, it'll pique folks' interest to maybe get off the highway. And as far as someone that would likely utilize that, and there are so many people in this community that I think would be drawn to it, and again, I think it would get, it would bring people off the highway too, more than the State House dome does, that, that's open, the State House is open very infrequently, in my estimation. So I support this. I think Nate made some great points, the delay, you know, it's been, excuse me, Counselor Fennessey, the delays, how long are we going to delay this? You know, I looked at the master plan, and I think it was 1997 this has been going on, that this has been identified, and I think tonight's the night we move this project forward.
Thank you, Counselor. I will point out, though, that the Phoenix Hall, the Phoenix sign is going to have to go through Architectural Design Review and be approved by Planning Board. Any other comments? Mayor Protem Seku.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I think, based on all the great testimony that we heard today, and of course, the concern about the historical building, I don't think people oppose the project, but I think there is a concern when it comes to the language that was drafted. And I love how the city manager said, "Send it back to the Planning Board. If you have other languages that you want to be captured, send an email or let's work together." But talking about five months or six months, it's always good to do a good work, and as somebody who was born, was born in Africa, I think today I will sit here and say, "I'm a proud American to see everybody's given an opportunity to share what they think it is." And that itself, we are talking about the democratic system that we always preach in America. So taking all this in consideration, I think, giving the Planning Board an opportunity to weigh in on this, it's absolutely, in my view, it's not a problem. But to come back again, discuss this until 11:00, I think will be a problem.
Trying to make it short.
Truly, because if we send it, we send it and then we have to come back again and review it and discuss it again. Let's send our comments to the Planning Board if we have any that we need to be tidling. Let's make sure that this is really what we counselors want it to be before it comes here, so that it will take us less time to discuss. But no doubt, the public, the needs, the project as they define it, an excellent project, and we support the project. So I think the tightening of the language shouldn't take us, again, another five hours to discuss this. So everybody who has a concern, let's send it to the Planning Board, but of course, they didn't seem like, based on Fennessey comment, they didn't do their job, but they're getting the opportunity now to tighten it and to make it good for, or to make it satisfying for some concern that some counselors has. And thank you to all those people that really testified today to this great project. We cannot talk about change and don't want to see the change. And I personally, like he said, if I look at 30 million and I look at the one second of the dome, I'll vote this tonight and we move on to next step. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Speller.
So, so, to give you all peace of mind, in reality here, think about what Counselor Todd said, and the Planning Board members still have some concerns about this. If an application is filed by Mrs. Sobrowski, that is going to those very same people. Those very same people are going to be making a determination of whether or not conditionally use permits should be granted, and it meets all the, all the conditions that were put in there. So it's not like the Planning Board said, "Hey, we don't have any more issues, we're all set," and that you all had concerns, and then a proposal's going to come in and you lose complete control over it. The people who are really having the concerns are the Planning Board members, the existing Planning Board, and the only place for this proposal to go is to the Planning Board. So those same people are going to be looking at this proposal whenever they submit, now that they, if they decide to, they want to move forward with it, will look at a proposal and say, "Yeah, I know, the zoning, the zoning just got changed, if that gets approved, but we have all these concerns, and we're not going to give you a conditionally use permit for that additional height until you address all of these items." Whether or not they're been incorporated into new regulations or not, those are, that's the discretion that you're giving the Planning Board to work with the developer to do that. So this is not a, "Open the door," Mark's going to run through it, and he's going to get what he wants. This is going to be, the Planning Board has final say on what happens, and then, and of course, that could change over time, but right now, the Planning Board is going to be able to say, "No, no, I don't see the vitality here. You're not getting the additional three feet, you're not doing the, you're not doing the rest on the roof, and that's the end of the story, and see you later."
All right. I do not want to confuse everyone, however, the witching hour has arrived. I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow us to meet beyond 11 o'clock.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The motion passes by the necessary two-thirds majority. All right. Any, any other discussion? Counselor Horn.
I would just like clarification of the motion. So we're passing the ordinance as it's been handed to us, but you made an amendment just stating the letter was, could be changed, but we're now saying...
The letter would be referred to Planning Board.
Right. We're also saying that there can be other changes for what the Planning Board wants or what we make, or different people may suggest.
That's up to Planning Board.
Okay.
Exactly. And I think that's why the city manager said, "If you have thoughts, send them to Planning Board." This allows Planning Board the latitude to address all those, but now the hook is the letter, yeah.
And then it will come back to us at some point, we still have to...
Correct, because we would have to approve any changes.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Counselor Fennessey.
I just want to say, I know a couple of people have ascribed to me, I don't want the perception to be that I said the Planning Board didn't do their job. I think the Planning Board...
You didn't say that.
My complaint is that the Planning Board said to staff, "Go ahead, we don't need to see it again." And then, you know, a week ago, some members of the Planning Board said, "Oh, by the way, I don't like this, I don't like that, can you change it?" From my perspective, if the Planning Board wanted to have another bite at the apple, they should have said, "Bring the thing back to us before you send it on to Council." So, thank you all for volunteering on the Planning Board. You have many more long nights.
I'm going to warn you, I'm going to just advise everyone, the longer we talk, the later we're here. Counselor Kurtz, Counselor Schultz, I'm so sorry.
Still willing to be a member of her family, just for the record. I just wanted to thank Counselor Todd for representing the voices that couldn't be here, and that was really all I wanted to say, is that I think that that was really valuable to my consideration, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All right. Before I put this to a vote...
If there's no other discussion, I would ask for a roll call, Your Honor.
All right. I have a request for a roll call. Let me say this, I will, I will be voting in favor of this amendment. Eight months ago, I resigned as the chairman of the board at the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance with great regret. I did that because I didn't want there to be any appearance of conflict of interest in the event that any business related to the Preservation Alliance came before this body. However, I state that to say that I am a preservationist at heart, and I do want to make sure that we pass ordinances that do protect our historic infrastructure. And I think that this motion with the amendment allows us to help assure that that takes place, and I, despite the fact that I do think this is a strongly written ordinance, and I compliment the staff and thank them for all the hard work that they have put into it. Let me also say that for 10 years, I served on the Planning Board, and I'm still an alternate on the Planning Board, and we really need to appreciate the volunteer work that the Planning Board members put in. It may not be quite as much work as we put in as city counselors, but, you know, they get a full packet like we do every month, and they have to go through that packet, and they have to, they have to adjudicate, they have to make decisions. And we are extremely fortunate that every one of the people who sit around that, this table, as members of the Planning Board, do their job, because they're what a volunteer government in a democracy is all about. And they're the ones who are the gatekeepers for us, you know, on, for, to make sure that needed development takes place, but that the community interests are guarded. So having said that, I will put this to the vote. Counselor Keach has requested a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
I will start with Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kretvik.
Yes.
Counselor Kurtz.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Schlosser.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Seku.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fennessey.
Yes.
Counselor Foote.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
And Counselor Horn.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's the result?
14 in favor.
Thank you very much.
Yes!
All right. Now, I'll use alacrity again, we're going to move forward with alacrity here. Madam Clerk, that brings us to item number, and now I've lost my page.
36.
36, yes.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $200,000 in the Loudoun Road Bridge Improvement Project for the evaluation and interim repair of the bridge deck on Loudoun Road Bridge and authorizing the transfer of $200,000 from the Bridge Reserve Fund for this purpose.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved, I'm sorry, opposed, no. The item passes with the necessary two-thirds majority. Madam Clerk, item 37.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $144,929.47 as a transfer to...
I'm having a hard time hearing this.
Thank you.
And accepting the sum of $144,929.47 in litigation settlement funds for this purpose.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it by the, and the motion passes by the necessary two-thirds majority. Madam Clerk, 38.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $90,000 in the General Fund for a class and compensation study and authorizing the use of $90,000 in human resources reserved for this purpose.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Opposed, no? Eyes have it by the, and the motion passes by the necessary two-thirds majority. Madam Clerk, item thirty-nine.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title V Administrative Code, Chapter 35, Classification and Compensation Plan, Schedule D of Article 35-2, Class specification index modifying positions as outlined in the ordinance.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion passes. Thank you. We now go to reports. Do we still have our UNH sustainability? All right.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm going to, I'm going to give you a resolution or a proclamation for sitting through this entire thing.[642.44][642.44](laughter)
Well, good evening. We have some really good news.[664.12][664.12](laughter)
We need that, yeah.
So for the record, my name is Rob Burnham, Chair of the Concord Energy and Environment Advisory Committee, and here with our UNH fellow, Jen Booselang Cludier, and Beth Francis Spencer-Marker, well-known to us all, you for your work. So, tonight, what we're going to do is bring you up to date on the efforts that you actually taxed for us in March, when you, very kindly, and thank you very much, voted for Concord to join the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. Many of you noted how important it would be to have a robust and assessable public input process. And so, we have done that, we are going to do more of it, and one of the things that Jen is going to be focusing on tonight is how all that's going to work. So, turn it over to you.
Thanks, Rob, and thank you, council and Mr. Mayor for having me. I will keep it as short and sweet as possible. I am not a Merrimack County resident, so I'm very excited to get home after this, but-
Stay awake.
Yes, I, yeah.
I'll buy you some coffee.
I'm a, I'm a college student, staying awake past my bedtime's not too out of the realm of possibilities, but this summer, we, I, I came on board and I kind of picked up where the Energy and Environment Community, Committee leapt off with pretty much their brainstorming session, and I turned that into an actionable plan, a complete strategic plan that we have implemented. We have, I say we, because I have had a lot of help, but it has also been a lot of my own work, but I've built a informational one-pager which was attached as part of the agenda, which kind of summarizes everything that there needs to, that any resident would need to know about community power, where to go, had all the information at the time that we had available to us on it. CPCNH has made our community power website live as of today, so now residents have two websites to go to, which was also a part of our outreach plan. And then afterwards, after building the physical materials, including social media outreach, Concord Community TV bulletin board slide, a slide for use at City Hall, we conducted a lot of community group outreach. We reached out directly to leaders in the community, to different, to Concord, like things like Concord Green Space Coalition, we have a meeting with the Rotary Club Concord tomorrow. We really tried to expand and deploy as much community engagement and involvement with every idea that the SEEK committee gave me and that we all formulated. And, right now, if you look at our task tracker, which is our Excel spreadsheet-based widget that's tracking everything, we're kind of at like a 70% completion. We have finished all of our projects, reached out to as many community groups as possible, and solidified a few presentations. I mentioned Rotary Club that we have tomorrow. Just last week, with Councilman Todd's help, we had a presentation at Merrimack Valley Regional High School for Pennecook Village and anybody else who could come, about what community power is, what it's all about, why we're here as a part of City Council committing to our renewable energy goals, and what this means for everybody, and the biggest thing is a lot of cost savings, because three out of four of our energy options are cheaper than the utility rates, and so this is really going to help every Concord resident and small business save money, and also hopefully help reach our sustainability and greenhouse gas goals. A couple of things that I won't be around and be on board for, but are considered a part of our outreach plan, are things like the informational sessions we have in September with Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, Concord Multicultural Festival, we will be at a table with Councilman Brown. We were just at a table two nights ago, is that, is it two nights ago now, for National Night Out with Councilman Brown?
A whole week ago.
Whole week ago. I don't, it's been-
And councillor Foote.
It's been a very interesting two weeks, time-wise, and then tonight is another good lesson, and time is relative.[946.25][946.25](laughter) But, it has been a great summer, we've got a lot accomplished, had a lot of good communication at our PVA meeting, too, and yeah, everything, you guys are officially, like, I can pass the torch to both Rob and Beth, and everything's ready to hit the ground running, everything's good, we're doing our job, trying to strum up a lot of community support, and this is also an opportunity to educate people on like, where your electricity comes from, and it also helps empower people by being more aware of what goes into their energy bill, and also, how to read your electricity bill, because that's, that's been relevant as well. So, thank you.
And I just want to add one comment, just to thank you all. So, Jen was with us through the UNH Sustainability, I can't even tell you, Sustainability Fellowship Program, which council supports each year, she's the third one that we've had, and it's just invaluable to have her and the network she has through UNH that she brings to us. So, it's a $4,000 investment that City Council makes, so hopefully you can continue to support this program in the future, so we can keep doing initiatives like this each summer.
So, I'm going to put you on the spot and ask, despite the fact that you were working on sustainability, which is your focus, what's your biggest takeaway working with city government?
Um, so, for the record, I'm actually from Manchester, so I heard all of those digs.[1036.75][1036.75](laughter) I, I also agree, so, but-
You do know this is recorded, right?
This has given me a good, it's given me a better example of what goes into the civic process. You don't really get a lot of that. I'm, I lived in Manchester for 30 years, I didn't get a single lick of that there. I've since moved to a smaller community, and Concord's kind of like the in-between, and it's, it's very informative, and it's also really inspiring to actually see positive change take place and to also be able to be a part of that.
Well, I think you work with good people.
Yeah, I do, too. Yes, thank you.
So happy that you, so happy that you had this time with us.
I thank you guys for having me. I, all my life, wanted to just give back to the state of New Hampshire in a way that I thought was good and forward-thinking, and as has been a common theme, people can change, places can change, New Hampshire has to continue to adapt and change, so I just want to thank everybody here for allowing this opportunity to happen, because it's been fantastic.
Thank you. Thank you.[1106.83][1106.83](applause)
Couple of things real quick. Keep your eye out for the Community Power banners that will be strung over Main Street soon. So we'll be launching the program, as you know, in October. We have significant solar plans coming into the city. We're thinking about relaunching the weather rise program, now that we're in a better position to do that, with the PUC and the legislation passed as a result of those troubles some years ago. So I think we're all on the right track, and I want to thank you, all of you, for your support of the initiatives that we have put forward, for your support of the Concord Energy and Environment Committee, and I think that our, our residents are really going to benefit from your, from your leadership, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks very much. Thanks for hanging in there.
Thank you.
We now move to consideration for items both from the consent agenda. The first is item 20, pulled by councillor Brown. Madam City Clerk?
It's a report from the Deputy City Manager of Finance, recommending approval of the proposed 2025 membership daily fee simulator and outing rates for the Beaver Meadow Golf Course, as recommended by the Golf Course Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Councillor Brown?
Yes, I pulled this from consent, because I had a few questions, and I see that Mr. Davis is still here. So I had a question about the current members, and actually, Mr. Lebrun might be able to answer this. The sign-up by November 30th for the 2025 season maintain the 2024 rate. So, does that mean, let's say, somebody who has a, who has a, wants a family membership, if they purchase it on November 29th, does that mean they have, they pay $3,150 for all of next year? Is that what that means?
So as long as, as long as you're a current member this year, and if you purchase it by that date, by the expiration date, then you would be able to get the 2024 membership rate, yes.
Okay, so, oh, sorry, clarification. So, next year, they would only be paying, okay, they are not, it's a $600 savings, essentially.
Yeah, you get the, you get the savings, that's, that's one of the benefits that we've provided to the current membership, is that if you sign up by the end of this time period, you can either pay it all, you could do it over direct deposit or EFT over the next, you know, few months, as long as it's paid by the time that the golf starts playing next spring, then you get the benefit of the current rate as opposed to the higher rate.
Have we always done that?
We have done this for as many years as I can remember.
Okay. So, just clarification, so, follow-up, yes. So, last year, it's, the family rate was $2,850. So somebody who had been a member previously was paying $2,850 this year, when everyone else was paying significantly more, like-
As long as they signed up by the end of that promotion date that we put in there. That's something that the council has approved for eight, 10 years.
Twenty-plus, right.
Twenty years. Thirty, 20 years.
Thank you. I have a question about the golf advisory committee. I noticed that there are, there's a difference between season users and general public representatives.
Where, where are you?
In the ordinance. Just, no, in the committee makeup. Which is in the ordinance. How, I'm looking at, how many of the existing golf advisory committee members are golf members?
I, I don't know that, right off the top of my head, majority of them are, but I don't, I don't know the exact number. There's actually in the ordinance specifically, there's one or two that are not members at Beaver Meadow. Several people are not members.
I feel that that's conflict, when, you know, somebody who is a golf member is voting on the rates that they're paying, and it's $800 less compared to other golf courses. That, that's something that I have a concern with, in noticing this. In looking at this report, I noticed that the juniors are not, there is no increase for juniors. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I, and there is no non-resident rate, non-member, non, yeah, non-resident versus resident rate. Now, I know that Bow High School uses Beaver Meadow as their golf course, that's what, that's where they use. And Bishop Brady also uses Beaver Meadow as their golf course. I've had people say to me that they want to go to Beaver Meadow, but it's always booked. They can't get in, and so, with, with a member, you have access to the golf course 360 days, 12 hours a day. So we have kids from Bow coming, we have kids from Bishop Brady coming, that are paying this great, amazing low rate, but they're not paying for any of the upgrades as taxpayers. I mean, obviously, they're not taxpayers, but their parents would be. So I feel that there should be an increase for the junior rate, especially since we have two schools that rely on this. I know the Concord High School uses Concord Country Club, so we're, we just approved $900,000 for a parking lot. I know that former Concord residents have biked, or Concord residents biked to Beaver Meadow, or have in the past, but the, they're using vehicles, they're using the parking lot, so the non-residents should be paying more. And it, I think the juniors, there should be a junior non-resident increase.
Are you asking a question, or?
Um, that is what I'm, I'm making a statement to the council. If you could explain how the Bow sign-ups happen, I know at the high school, they pay the high school $100, but the coach or someone must come to Beaver Meadow to sign everybody up.
So, so, the high school, are you referring to the high school teams?
Uh, yes, it must be the golf club, the golf, yeah, I thought it-
So there, there's a, there's a Bow Athletic Club that pays daily fees every time they come, so they're paying every time they come, whether they're using the driving range or using the golf course, they pay the rates that are approved in here for junior, junior people to come play. The high school teams pay a prevailing fee for the entirety of their season. So there's another rate for, for them. I, I guess, is that, that's what I, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, just how, how that process happens.
Or their parents come pay for them.
Right.
Yeah.
I feel that we should be, thank you. I feel that we should have a non-member and a member rate. I mean, I'm looking at, the majority of the golf advisory committee are members, and they are deciding to, they are voting on, it's a financial benefit to them, to be on this committee, to choose a rate that is hundreds of dollars less than other golf courses, so-
Mr. Lebrun, am I correct that this particular ordinance, this particular report includes a discount for residents Concord for seasons pass?
Not for seasons pass. This provides, this, this is a recommendation from the Golf Course Advisory Committee-
Right.
-to provide a discount for some of the greens fee rates.
Yep.
The Golf Course Advisory Committee discussed the issue of providing for separate rates for residents and non-residents for the memberships, and they decided against making that recommendation. City Council can make whatever recommendation they would like to make, or make whatever decision they would like to make, but the Golf Course Advisory Committee did not make that recommendation.
Okay. Do, am I correct in my assumption that our rates are set, you know, in, in an attempt to balance the expenses, cover our, as many of our expenses as we can, to operate the course, but also to remain competitive against other golf courses?
We, we, we do that. We look at, you know, the rates of the golf courses, I think we put the comparative rates that we had in, for the other courses that we compared to for both the memberships and also for the greens fees. The advisory committee takes a look at that, they look at what the rates are currently for 2024, they consider a number of different options for the 2025 rate, they look at the competitiveness in the community, in the area, and trying to make the best recommendation that they can make in order to make sure that we cover our expenses, be competitive, and also keep the, the overall golf public happy with the, the pricing.
How does, how does our facility compare with, for example, another municipal course, Pembroke Pines?
Well, Pembroke Pines is not a municipal course, they're a private course, but they're open to the public.
Okay.
So, when you say, how does it compare, you mean price-wise?
Price-wise, facility-wise.
Well, the facility at Pembroke Pines is a little bit better than the facility at Beaver Meadow at this time, and if you haven't had a chance to go over there, it's kind of a neat place to-
Is that a factor in how much we can charge?
It would be a factor in how much we could charge, I would believe, you know, to-
Okay. Now, as we, as, as the, as the advisory board's raised, is it beneficial to have people who know about golfing on the advisory committee?
I, I believe it is, because if you don't know anything about golfing, then how can you make it, you know, recommendations?
Would it be best if we had golfers who belonged to the country club exclusively, since, you know?
To, to the country club, meaning Concord Country Club?
Well, I'm trying to figure out how we, how we can have people who know something about golf on the golf advisory, on the Beaver Meadow Advisory Committee, you know, who are not, who do not use the Beaver Meadow facility.
Well, I-
Do not buy a seasons pass.
I think we have, I think by ordinance, there's one or two positions that are not members, so there are some who would have a different perspective, so that could be helpful as well, too, right? But I think that, you know, when you look at the advisory committee overall, if you have an understanding of golf and the operation of a golf facility, and everything else that goes on there, including skating, skiing, everything else, it's very helpful that those folks have some knowledge of that in order to make recommendations.
Thank you. Councillor Keach?
Thank you, your honor. Mr. Lebrun, just to be clear, there's, I think there's a little misinformation or-
Mr. Lebrun, just to be clear, there's, I think there's a little misinformation or misunderstanding, but the advisory committee does not set rates. They make recommendations, and ultimately, it's up to council to set rates. Is that, is that correct?
That is exactly correct. It's just a recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Counselor Fenice?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the membership and the daily fees as recommended by the Golf Advisory Committee.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, moving to seconded. Any further discussion?
Can I speak to my motion?
Good night.
Thank you. So, a couple of different things in front of you. First is the membership fees. There was discussion before the committee to potentially have different rates for members versus, residents versus non-residents. The individuals, I believe all of the individuals who are members of the advisory committee, who are members of the golf course are residents. I think I'm correct on that. As a committee, we decided that the membership fee that you're paying is already a bit of a discount, so you don't need to further discount it for residents versus non-residents. The way the membership works is the more you pay, the more you play, the less you pay on a per-round basis, essentially. So, as a committee, we decided it didn't make sense. Plus, I think, and I'm sure Brian will correct me, from the survey we've done, 75% of our members are residents?
That's just about right, 75%.
So, that was the membership piece. With respect to junior members, I was one of the vocal people who said, I don't think we should increase the prices for juniors. I think golf should be accessible to people under 18. I don't think we should be expecting 12, 14, and 14-year-olds to be paying for the improvements at Beaver Meadow. I think we want to expose them to golf. Some kids show up and they're there all the time, some kids show up maybe once or twice. So, I think, as a city, we want to make golf affordable for, you know, the use. It's, aside from, you can pick up some bad habits perhaps with gambling, but other than that, there's a lot of good things that you learn from playing golf and spending time at the golf course. So, that, that's the membership piece. On the greens fee side, we did make a recommendation as the committee to the council to adopt, with respect to what I'll call the default rates, primetime rates, that there be a discount for Concord residents as opposed to non-residents, just on sort of the, the primetime rates. So, for 18 holes on the weekend, 18 holes during the week, and nine holes, I believe.
You're exactly right. Okay. Counselor Horn.
Counselor Horn?
No.
Okay, Counselor Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate the conversations around junior golf, but I do think that there's a little bit of a misconception about, oh, if you're from Bow, you shouldn't, or you should pay more because you play at Concord. We forget the fact that we have Merrimack Valley School District, they have a golf team, they play out at Beaver Meadow, and they don't all live here, because they have kids from Webster, and from Bosquin, and from Loudon, and from Pennacook, and from Concord. It is a regional school and a regional golf program that is offered at their school. Likewise, you can say the same thing about Concord High, because Concord High has kids from Dairyfield and kids from other areas outside of Concord. Dear, thank you. I never get them correct. But, to impinge upon the play of a junior of all people, that would be hugely concerning. And the splitting hairs between someone from Bishop Brady versus somebody from Concord High. Bishop Brady is a school inside of Concord, New Hampshire. Why shouldn't those students get the same advantage when they come here every day? We want to be a welcoming community. However, live, work, stay, play is not relevant here if you're a non-resident. You must live here. That's the conversation we're starting to have. How are we going to define ourselves as a welcoming community if we're going to put up barriers for the youngest among us to participate in a program that generates so much lifelong commitment to a sport? And the juniors that we have today have far more advantage at a better game of golf than they ever did when I was a kid, because I can tell you, there was no pro giving lessons to junior girls. Boys, sure, but girls, no. Not allowed on that big course. Heaven forbid that girl carry those clubs. I think it is an absolute misconception when you further that conversation by trying to compare us to Pembroke Pines or Canterbury Woods. They are owned by the same private corporation that spent $18 million on a clubhouse. They invested money in order to gain membership at Pembroke Pines, and guess what? The rumor is, they're going to raise their rates by $500 per year and go private. They invested money to make money. I do want the meeting minutes to reflect. The money that is being spent on the parking lot is not taxpayer money. It is money generated by the golfers through the greens fee rates and also the membership rates. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention our fire department representatives that are here, some of whom have been at Beaver Meadow, thanks to the privilege that we provided to them for being able to play at the resident member guest fee. And now we want to consider taking that away? I don't think so. That's not what I'm in favor of. I'm in favor of all of the opportunities that we offer in this community for all the recreational reasons why we want to live, work, stay, and play in Concord, New Hampshire. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Brown.
Yes, thank you. And I, I hope, I would like the minutes to also reflect that Concord taxpayers are paying millions of dollars in irrigation improvements. So, we need to look at how we can afford all these great recreational opportunities. We have kids that are on the heights, there was just a story in the paper recently about how they can't afford to access the park that is across the street from them. The golf course is 169 acres. So, we have this massive green space that a lot of people are, it's unavailable to them, it's inaccessible to them. So, I think that we have areas where we can have non-residents pay more to offset the improvements that we provide that they use here in Concord.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion before we take the vote? All right, I'll move the question. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
All right, ayes have it. Madam Clerk, item 21, which was pulled from consent by Counselor Kretovic.
I'm sorry, I will be ever, ever, ever...
Report from City Solicitor on Complaints Reviewed by the Board of Ethics at their June 24th meeting and Recommendations from the Board of Ethics to City Council Regarding Complaints Received at their July 29th hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. I will move to approve this item. I just had one comment, which is in regards to the ethics board and their review, and that their findings are really vital, and that we together, as a community, have to accept and respect their conclusions. There were some gaps in the rules and ethics ordinance that we have today that members of the Rules Committee, members of the community have identified, and we will address those, but we want to let the ethics board finish their process before we take this up. So, we simply ask for patience while they finish their review, and then we can take these things up again together and bring some recommendations before the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Do I have a motion? Second. All right, moved and seconded, moved by Counselor Kretovic, seconded by Counselor Schlosser. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Ayes have it, motion passes. Item 31, pulled from consent by Counselor Horn and Counselor Brown.
It's a resolution accepting the sum of $6,250 from Onyx Partners to support a third-party peer review of potential public-private partnership concerning redevelopment of the former Staplegate Mall and Regal Cinema Sites located at 270 and 282 Loudon Road, and appropriating the sum of $6,250 for this purpose.
Thank you. Counselor Horn.
I'm opposed to this because the Onyx Partners purchased these properties for approximately $22 million. They are now stating that without the public-private partnership, the proposed redevelopment may not be economically viable. I understand that there are cases where public-private partnerships may behoove the city when we get a good return on the investment in tax dollars, vibrancy, needed housing, et cetera. But right now, our taxpayers simply cannot foot the initial outlay of funds in tax dollars as they wait for that return. Between the spending of the council and the school board, we cannot keep passing on further expenditures right now, especially when these will be market-rate homes and not affordable or even workforce. They want us to subsidize some of the more expensive forms of housing while we have people leaving our city for lack of affordable housing. Although I'm opposed to providing any aid to this developer, other counselors might be amenable to the private, public, private-public partnership, so I feel like Onyx needs to prove that need by paying fully for this peer review.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brown, do you wish to speak to it?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Horn, she summed it up.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Approval, seconded, all right, further discussion?
I guess I need to move the...
Oh, okay, all right, thank you, I'm sorry. Counselor Todd.
Thank you, I just, I want a clarification. I think that the funding portion from the city that we're talking about is supposed to come from the community, well, it's the Community Development Department's operating budgets. In other words, this is money that we've already appropriated. I get, I get clarification from the city manager if I could.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah. So, in other words, they already have these dollars. These taxpayers have already paid for these dollars, and so, these dollars that are going to be used for this, I guess, right? It's not an extra appropriation, but we're just, it's coming out of our budget.
Counselor, Counselor...
But if we don't spend it here, we have it to spend in other places, right?
Or, or it'd go to surplus.
Oh, okay.
Counselor Kurtz.
Mr. Manager, are there examples of the city asking for a third-party study and not contributing? Do we have it within our ordinances that we can demand a study or request a study and, and not contribute to it?
For this, for an example, for using this type of analysis, no, there are not. Planning Board does it all the time. So, when somebody comes in for a proposal and says, you know, I need you to do a traffic analysis, we want an outside firm to take a second look at that to make sure, you know, something's being done, or some, something very special, then we will require the developer to pay for that. In this case, what this request is, is the, their, this is their, this is their share, is the developer's share of the dollars. You would have to vote to actually accept that and match it with the dollars that you've already appropriated in the Community Development Department to spend those dollars. In this case, most projects are to the level where staff feels comfortable doing the financial analysis and making a determination of whether or not there's some sort, you know, like the 70/90, I don't think you've been through one of these, but like the 70/90 process, and taking a look at, okay, is there really a need here for the city to get involved? Should we do some sort of assistance through a tax increment, or not, or a tax break, or something like that? They're usually small. This year is a hundreds of millions of dollars worth of project. And the thought is, I'll just speak for myself, I won't speak for anybody around the table, is that when it came time for a public-private partnership, does the council going to want to ask for things like, you're proposing 600-plus housing units, we may want some of those to be affordable. You're proposing a, a lot of residential and commercial development out here. We've really looked in this area in the past for maybe public park space out on the heights. How is that going to work? So, is the quid pro quo for, for participation? You may get to the point where we do the analysis and get, based on the information, saying, they, they don't need any assistance. They're based on what they want to propose. What they're proposing isn't something we're necessarily thinking to be involved with, but until you do the analysis, you're not going to know that. So, that's, so it's really just bringing in a third party to help us do the analysis. If you don't want to do the analysis, or have somebody from the outside look over our shoulder as we do it, we'll do it ourselves, but you, again, you're not going to have that third party so that you can say to the community, it isn't just staff looking at this, we have people who are experts doing this on a regular basis, giving you their recommendation. Of course, we could ignore all of that if you don't like the results of it anyways. So, that's, that's what it is. So, this is a, this is unusual.
Thank you.
Counselor Keach.
Thank you, I'll, I'll be brief, but I just have three quick points. One, I think this is a, a project that's so economically complicated that it requires a level of expertise that perhaps a city administration doesn't possess to adequately analyze it. So, I think that's really important to get a fresh set of eyes on it. Number two, it takes a lot of the politics out of the analysis. And when the analysis comes back, I think it's, it's just a more impartial evaluation of what's going on. And thirdly, to the mayor's point, I, depending on what this analysis tells us, I think it does give us the opportunity to say, hey, if you want our help, here are the conditions. We want some affordable housing, we want more open space. Those aren't demands we necessarily can make of a developer unless the city's got some skin in the game. So, there's an opportunity there that may be worth a while, maybe not. I'm, I'm not prepared to make a decision as to whether it's worth our while or not, but I think we should spend a few dollars to gather the facts and make an informed decision.
Counsel Fenice.
Just to echo that last point, I think obviously we need more information before we ever determine whether it makes sense or not. I see the money we're spending here as an opportunity for us to obtain facts. So, we're not just relying upon what they're telling us. We have an independent consultant looking at it and providing us that information.
Thank you. Counselor Horn.
I just want to be clear, I didn't, I'm not opposed to a third-party review. I want them to pay for it, was my, what I was trying to say.
Counsel Brown.
So, would it be appropriate to make an amendment that we have, we require them to have a peer review, and they pay the full amount?
You certainly can make that amendment, make that motion.
Right.
Is that what you're doing?
I think was the motion, there was a motion to accept this.
We do have a motion on to accept it, but you can make a motion to...
Yeah, so that, so my amendment is that we require them to do a peer review, and they pay for it.
Could I do a little, okay. So, I think what you really want is you, if you want to go that direction, you would want the developer to provide you with the full set of funds, because we would want to hire our own third peer, right? We wouldn't want them to say, oh, yeah, we gave it to our friend down the street, they said it's wonderful. You, you would want to accept a, so instead of accepting 6250, you want to accept, I'll do my math, 12, 5, right? You want to expect, accept 12, 5 to do this analysis. We would contract with who we think is, is best to do this, do that analysis, share that information obviously with them, because they're paying for it, but that way it'd be an independent third-party review and not somebody that they hand-pick to do the review. So, so you would vote not to accept the report and ask us to go back and talk to the developer and say, hey, are you willing to put up the full amount? And then if they were, then we'd bring that back at a subsequent meeting, and you would have to vote to accept those dollars instead of this amount.
So, and, so for clarification, it would be, if that is the route we would like to go, we would vote against accepting this report?
No. Well, well, no. I mean, I think, well, you need to direct staff to do something.
Right, but we would, but the motion on the table is to accept this report.
Motion on the table is to accept the report. Your amendment, which is also on the table because it was moved, I think it was seconded by, no?
No. It's not a clear motion yet.
All right, so it's not a motion yet. We can do that. I mean, I'd like to ask a question of the city manager, you know, if, let's say that we do not pass this, we do not approve this report, and we send you back to, therefore, we don't accept their half of the money.
Right.
And we send you back to Onyx to say, city council said they wanted this, because I think they said we wanted to have this report.
Right.
But now city council says they don't want to pay for half of it, you have to pay for half of it. What happens if Onyx turns around and says, we're not going to, I'm sorry, pay for all of it? What happens if Onyx says, well, we don't want to pay for it?
Well, then you would, when the request for the public-private partnership comes in, you would say to staff, either do the best you can reviewing this information, and we would do the best we can, like we've done with every other project, and give you our analysis of this. And then you, because I don't think you'd want to say out of hand, we're not interested in a public-private partnership, because this is, this is potential hundreds of millions of dollars being spent up there for redevelopment. And you don't want to be the ones to say no to Costco, or, or, to the community who wants you to say yes to Costco. So, I think we'd, we'd go back to them and say, we would like you to come up with the other 62, 6250 for this, and then we'd bring back another report saying, well, now we have $12,500, would you like to accept this? So, we would, we would do the analysis, but we would let them know that we're, we think the whole cost of this should be on you, the developer, not on, not half and half.
Okay. Ms. Raper, time.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, city manager, my understanding is that either way, we will still have our hands on that analysis, because we want it to... that analysis, because we want it to be as independent as possible.
Well, well, the analysis that, the depth of the level of the analysis that you're getting would, you would not have, we would not have the money to do a third-party analysis. It would just be done the best we can in-house with the staff that we have. So, you would, you would not have that third party coming into you saying, hey, this is, this works or this, or this doesn't work.
Follow-up. And this analysis is ready to give us as much information as possible to educate us on this because of the level of the project.
The complexity of the project, and I think essentially what you'd be doing is running, we'll be running pro formas to say, okay, based on what their, based on what their costs are and what they want to do on the types of development that they want to put in here, this is going to have these depths of financial impacts.
Okay.
Then you, then you may want to say, well, that's great, but what happens if 100 units of that was affordable housing, and instead of doing this type of commercial here, you did that type of commercial? If you want to, if you want to have an influence on, then you need to be in a partnership. Otherwise, it's really just, a plan's going to be submitted to the planning board, and the planning board's going to, planning board's going to say, okay, you're allowed to do this, you're not allowed to do this, and it's going to go its own certain way. So, it's, the question is, do you want to be involved in this, or?
Right.
You want to have some control.
So, yeah, the more, the more, and you may look at it and say, no, the cost of that control is really not worth it to the taxpayer.
Counsel Todd.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank Counselor Horne for bringing this up, because I think this is, you know, it's important to really look at all these things and, and discuss this, this in a little bit more depth. I think we're getting a better understanding of what's actually involved here, so I think, I appreciate that. And, you know, I share her concerns, but on the other hand, I'm looking at this as it's not a lot of dollars that we're going to potentially expend here, and I just think that we'd be entering into this more on kind of an equal footing if we were, if we said, okay, you're paying half, we're paying half. We have equal say, we'd be able to have an equal say in selecting who, who will be doing the analysis, I assume, that would come with that, or is that not the case?
I, we've talked to them about who we think would be, would be good at doing this, and we have an agreement about who, who could do the work.
So, I'm just going to follow up your...
Yeah, follow up.
So, in other words, there is agreement about who, from us and Onyx as to who to select, right? So, we've got, we've identified that entity.
But only if there's money to do it.
But only if there's money to do it, right. So, yeah, that, so that reason, I think, I'm interested in going forward and the reasons that Counselor Keach had mentioned earlier. Also, just add one to that, which is that this could be a prototype for something that we might want to do going forward, but we may, we may have to end up, depending on cost of projects, to enter into more of these kind of public-private partnerships going forward. So, I'm thinking this might be a great test of that, to see, there are other, as we know, there are potentially other large projects out there, and so I would like to see us, you know, kind of try this out as proposed and see how it works. Again, if there was more dollars, if it was, you know, I had to pay $20,000 or something, we had to do an appropriation, I wouldn't be in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with Counselor Todd, that was exactly the reason why I'm supporting this, is that I think it's a good opportunity to do a test case that's, it's not uncommon, that a large development comes in front of us and they want a public-private partnership with the city, and it means that we have to do some sort of analysis that says, is this going to be a good return of investment on taxpayer money? In this regard, it's just like he said, this is a test case that says, are we going to get a good return of investment on city money should a bigger public-private partnership be requested? Thanks.
Counsel Brown.
Just to help you, if I could just put this in scope, think about the scale of the investment here and the scale of the value, you're all familiar with Horseshoe Pond. It's a Horseshoe Pond-type size project. And of course, we worked out with CRDC, Capital Regional Development Council, years ago, who had a whole team of people working with the city on that and city staff. So, we had all kinds of additional assistance in working on that, and that still took 15, 20 years to build out. So, who knows how long this could, I mean, this isn't a, somebody's going to drop a box on there. This is going to go on for a decade, this type of development.
Counsel Brown.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, couldn't we just say that we would not entertain a public-private partnership without a peer review? So, so that is completely off the table if we do not have a peer review. So, they would have to have a peer review of this agreed-upon person.
Yeah, you can, if you want, if it's a public-private partnership, you control your side of the parameters of that. So, you could simply draw a line and say, we're not interested participating, and they can simply say, well, thank you very much, we're going forward with our project as we've envisioned it, and, you know, keep your trusty as self, you know, frankly, is what they're going to say, I would think, if you're not, if you're not going to be involved in it.
Follow-up.
Follow-up.
Doesn't, doesn't it benefit them more to have a peer review that there is a consideration?
That could lead to a public-private partnership?
Yes.
You would think so. But I can't speak for them.
I'm going to vote in favor of the motion, which is to adopt the resolution that's presented, for a lot of the reasons that the city manager has mentioned. I appreciate Counselor Horne and Counselor Brown bringing this up. I think this has been a healthy discussion. It's also revealed a lot of the details behind, you know, how the city interacts with a large development, which has potential, extraordinary potential payback to the city, you know, in terms of tax revenue and in terms of economic vitality and activity. But I really think that, at this point, I mean, again, I know that it's, it's a principle that's being raised here, but I think this is short dollars for a long gain for the city. And so, for that reason, I'm going to be voting in favor of the motion as presented.
Call the question.
Call the question, the question has been called, not debatable.
Could I ask for a roll call, Your Honor?
A roll call vote, thank you. All right, Counsel Keach, Counselor Fennessey has moved the question. Counselor Keach has asked for a roll call vote. Madam City Clerk.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Kurtz.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Schlosser.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz is no longer here. Counselor Zephu.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
No.
Mayor Chaplin.
Yes.
Counselor Fennessey.
Yes.
Counselor...
No.
Counselor Grady Sexton is gone, and Counselor Horne.
No.
So, three nays. I can't even count.
Well, hurry up, because at midnight, we turn into pumpkins.
12 is still here. 12 is still here. Thank you.
All right, all right, the motion passes. Does anybody have, does anybody have any energy left for personal comments?
No. Thank you.
That was it.
Thank you, Paul.
Yes, Mayor Protan.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to say that the multicultural festival is Saturday, Sunday, September 22nd, from 11 to 5 at Keach Park. Get ready to have some fun where your dancing shoes and have some appetite for some delicious food. And I want to say, let join Concord Multicultural to celebrate the incredible diversity we have in our community, to learn also from those people, and also to create a safe and welcoming community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Horne.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to mention September 8th, 8 to 1, Main Street, Rebel Stokes Coffee and Car, Sunday, where they're going to shut down Main Street. Really looking forward to that participation by the community, so it should be a fun time.
What's that date again?
September 8th, 8 to 1.
All right, thank you.
Have a great night.
Counsel Brown.
Yes, just like to say, the parks have been amazing, the pools have been clean and beautiful, National Night Out was fantastic, and Counselor worked with me to tell folks about community power and tree conservation, and I'd like to recognize that the Concord Concerned Citizens Group submitted their petition for an amendment. There are 345 signs all around Concord in support of rebuilding at Runlet. I believe that we should have a public hearing in the same vein that we did for DOT. We had multiple presentations by them, and we had multiple hearings. I'd actually like to make a motion that we have a public hearing following their presentation. Is there a second?
I will second.
Was there a second? A second, all right. I'm going to vote against it.
Could you repeat the last sentence?
I make a motion that we have a public hearing about the middle school project immediately after the presentation by this school, by the school district on the middle school project this fall.
Do we need to suspend the rules to consider a motion?
Yes, we would have to suspend the rules. We would need a two-thirds vote, I think. Would we, hang on, would we need a suspension of the rules?
Why?
I mean, the matter hasn't been presented to us in advance.
That's right, it hasn't been presented in advance.
Your Honor.
Yes.
This is one of the items that the Rules Committee is going to take up, because there really isn't any regulation around that, with the exception of that there is something that states that it must be reduced to writing one week before the council meeting to discuss, and that we wanted to give some leeway for counselors to be able to submit before noon of the night of the meeting, because counselors don't pack it in advance of the one week. So, that is one item that the Rules Committee is considering.
But, under the current rules, it has to be invited and presented to us in advance, which we don't have anything. So, in order to consider it, we have to suspend the rules.
Correct.
All right. Counsel Todd.
Thank you, Your Honor. If I understand Counsel Brown's motion, I appreciate the sentiment behind it, because I'm always in favor of disseminating more information, but I don't see what the, I don't think that this body, if the, if your concept, Counsel Brown, was to have the city council hold that kind of meeting, I would recommend frankly that, you know, I'm not, I'm not as knowledgeable on this project as, as, you know, other people are. The kind of questions I think that people want to ask at this, I might not be prepared to answer them, but our city staff might be. So, if we reach a point in this project where city staff might be available to, you know, have a co-meeting with the Concord School District, then that might be an opportunity. But I don't know that we're ready for that yet.
No, I'm sorry, let me clarify. The school district is giving a presentation on the middle school project. My motion is that, just as we did for DOT when DOT gave a presentation, that the following, following month, we would have a public hearing.
Counsel Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. I will not be voting in favor of the motion that sits before us, whether suspended or not. I think there's a very clear difference between the Department of Transportation project and the school district project. The Department of Transportation is utilizing federal money, and they are required to do a context-sensitive solution process, which means they reach out to the community for which they are going to be impacting, which is the city of Concord. This is a 30-year conversation, I think, that we've had with the Department of Transportation, where we've gone back and forth about, this is what you want? No, this is not what we want. That's what you want, this is what we want. And then they come back and they go, okay, we've made some concessions. The only reason they were including us in the process is because of the federal dollars that are involved in that process. That's my understanding, it's my cursory understanding, but it also was impacting Opportunity Corridor, which is our land. We own it. And so, they were engaging us as a property owner.
Point of order, what's going on right? I don't understand what's going on right now. Is it, is this an order, this discussion? This, this, it is, it is the hours late, and we're all tired, and this is the worst possible time to make important decisions. There's a motion that has been made and seconded. There was a question as to whether we need to suspend the rule in order even to consider it, because it is so unusual and extraordinary in terms of the business process, Counsel. Go ahead. So, we have plenty of time to think about this. This doesn't have to be done tonight. Let's, if you have a request, put it in writing, let's consider it thoughtfully, you know, with the pros and cons or whatever the issues are, but I don't think, I would say it doesn't have to be, there's no reason it has to be done tonight if it's going to happen this fall sometime.
Your Honor, I would like, I will retract my motion, and, but I would like to request that when we receive that presentation, that we also allow the public to speak.
Thank you, Counselor. All right. Counsel, Counsel Horne.
Sorry, three quick.[1705.33]